Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, October 9th, 2006. This evening, City Council will be doing several things. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. After that, we will be going into a special session to consider just two ordinances, and then a series of six different committee meetings. First item, again, is a public hearing on the comprehensive plan. We are passing around a sign-in sheet for everybody that is in attendance, and tonight is City Council's chance to listen to what those members of the public wish to say about the comprehensive plan that will be coming before us. Who would like to speak to Council first?
Muriel Grimm, 24 Canterbury. And, let's see, I have a brief statement to read, and I will not read or comment on an additional expanded explanation that we'd also like to pass. This is a statement on behalf of the executive committees of the neighborhood associations. The executive committees of Athens Neighborhood Associations would like to make the following requests regarding the City of Athens Comprehensive Plan. One, a process for updating the plan should be created very soon. Two, several citizens read and compared the version of the comprehensive plan that was prepared by the consultant Pogomire and the version that was approved by the Planning Commission, and we have compiled all of the differences between them. One obvious difference is that the Planning Commission-approved document is very well-organized and much easier to read. Three, as a result of our reading, we support accepting the comprehensive plan as approved by the Planning Commission with one caveat: While there are many differences between the Planning Commission and the Pogomire versions of the plan, there are three that should be reconciled immediately, even before a plan-updating process is established. We request that Council start the process for reconciling these three differences at the next council meeting. Four, we are submitting an expanded description of the three substances differences, which are: The absence of all but two of the references to watershed and vista preservation. The revision of subsection three of Phase 1, Section J, which is on accountability, that appears to change some of the intent of the subsection. And the third is, the use of the word "will" versus the word "should" in Phase 1. So these are the three things that we think need reconciliation right away, and the second expanded version that I passed around describes all of these in detail. And then our fifth request is, there are several hundred differences between the two versions of the comprehensive plan, over 100 of which should be carefully reviewed and may require revisions to the plan very soon. We are pleased to see that this comprehensive plan, which was initiated by citizens, paid for by the taxpayers, and involved extensive citizen input, is about to move on to the implementation phase. We request that a major effort be undertaken to make all of Athens citizens aware of the plan and its contents. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Muriel?
Yes, Mr. President. Number five says there are several hundred differences that you found.
Yes.
Does the executive committee have a list of all of them?
Yes. Yeah, each of us, we each read a different chapter, and we've made a list of them. I think most of them have been forwarded to Debbie Phillips at this point. There may possibly be others that haven't been done yet, but yeah.
Other comments, council members?
This may be more a question for you than Muriel, but I'll see, or Debbie. In terms of number four, the request that these three things be substantive differences be addressed now, what does that do in terms of the passing of this as an ordinance?
It's my understanding that Council can either accept or reject with a 4-3 vote by a simple, with a four-member vote, but to alter, and correct me if you have a different understanding, Mayor Abel, but to alter what's before us would take a six out of seven members of Council to vote in the affirmative.
By "immediately," we didn't mean immediately before, we meant immediately after passage.
Okay. I thought I understood you to say that these should be passed prior to the passing of the...
No, 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 we...
I'm a little late, but let me just say that when we did this, I was reading Triangle, and it's a wonderful book, but anyway, so, and I totally lost track of time, but having said that, when we passed the plan, we said they were the same thing, only in a different style. So the style was different, but the substance was the same. It was not a comprehensive plan, it was the comprehensive plan. So all the parts are supposed to be in both sections. So this must be an oversight.
What is an oversight?
The missing parts, the missing vistas and all the rest.
They're not there.
I rest my case.
Must be an oversight.
It must be an oversight, because we were told there were no substantive changes, and that was the condition under which I put the ordinance in.
So what are we saying here?
It's the same. I mean, they're supposed to be the same. That was my understanding, that there were no changes.
The Chair of the Planning and Development Committee has said that we could discuss this more in committee, which is meeting right after this.
Muriel, you said the...
What I don't want to have happen is a debate during a public hearing, and I am not trying to stifle any discussion on this, but we need to do it at the appropriate time. A public hearing is for the public to give their opinion. Member Wile.
Muriel, I noticed in the latest version of it, there is a map about view sheds and vistas. What section does that refer to? I mean, I assume that map has a reference to it.
It doesn't appear to.
It's just there.
The only possible place that it could be referenced is Page 101, because that's the only place where vistas and view sheds now appears.
Okay, 101's in Section 2 then, right?
Yes.
Which was the original Section 1 of the first version.
No, I don't know. Section, Phase 2 is now the implementation phase, I think.
I just wondered.
I don't believe that there was any, what was originally Chapter 13 is now what's called Phase 1, I think, and I don't think there is any place in that chapter where vistas and view sheds are mentioned.
Okay. I couldn't find it, but I wasn't, I was just doing a search.
Yes.
Muriel, I just wanted to reiterate that what the committee is recommending is that Council pass the comprehensive plan as read, but immediately attend to these changes after passage. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, that's what we're requesting.
That clarifies it.
Yes.
Other comments from Muriel? Thank you very much. Other people wishing to speak? Mr. Baum.
Edward Baum, 20 Sunnyside Drive. I just want to second the comments of Muriel Grimm. I think, all in all, the substance is the same. We could then argue over whether one of those hundred changes is really a change in style, or form, or substance, but I think that can be done after the plan is adopted, and I'm pleased at this time that we're having a public hearing on the plan. There is a question, I guess it would be a Law Director question, whether or not this comes at the recommendation of the Planning Commission, or rather, these are a plan which is adopted by both the Planning Commission and Council. If it were a zoning question, then it would, I think, your statement that it would take six votes to override or make any changes would be the case, but I think the way the code reads that a comprehensive plan is something that is adopted both by the two bodies, but doesn't have any provision for overriding or anything else. That's why earlier I had recommended, and I'm glad that the executive committees are also recommending, that we adopt it as it is right now, and then immediately get to the task of updating. You're supposed to update a plan at least every five years, and sooner than that, and we've been working on this for almost six.
Well, it isn't because we didn't try it.
I know, I'm not saying that we didn't, but it's just been a long process, and I think the adoption of it, and then working off the areas, for example, the vistas and view sheds question, a couple of the other questions that come up. Thank you.
Ed, I appreciate your comments. I will check with Law Director. Okay. Looks like the President needs to stand corrected, because Member Bain is telling me I'm also incorrect on that, that a vote of four members of Council...
Well, I asked Gary what it took, and he told me that.
Oh, okay.
Informally, didn't say it in writing.
It was my understanding, anything we were handed by the Planning Commission for us to change, it was a six of seven members, but it looks like I stand corrected. Other comments? Please come forward.
David Ingram, 120 Morris Avenue, member of the Near East Side Neighborhood Association. A particular reference that I think was being discussed is on Page 101 at the bottom, under, it's G for vistas. It says, "The map shows significant use throughout the City of Athens." There is no reference at that point as to which map they're referring to, and that, again, gets the somewhat incompleteness of this document, though I think there's still some polishing to be done to really tie up some of these loose ends. The original reference there was in Section 6.4 of Phase 2 of the plan as submitted by Pogomire.
Pogomire.
And I, again, will endorse what Ed Baum and Muriel said, that we think you should pass it as is, and then immediately go into a mode of correcting, amending, improving.
Thank you, David. Next.
Bill.
Yes.
I just wanted to comment on David's work. At the committee meeting, when we went through this plan, David was amazing, having every single little difference marked in his copy, and could flip through and reference them back, cross-reference. It was quite amazing, so that's, I'm quite sure, partly why they have over 100 recommended changes and 300 differences.
I don't know.
Are there other members of the community that wish to address Council tonight? Going once? Going twice? Any other comments on the comprehensive plan by any council members?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. President, I have another question. In terms of passing it and then beginning the review process, is that just something we informally say, yes, we're going to do, and that would, that'll be discussed in committee? Excellent, thank you. Okay.
Just want to thank everybody who's been working so hard for all these years, old steering committee, new executive members.
Yours plural.
Thanks.
Seeing no one else wishing to address Council on the comprehensive plan, public hearing, this public hearing is now closed. Now, on to a special session of City Council for Monday, October 9th, 2006. We do have a quorum with all members of Council present. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 5906, an ordinance authorized in an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Division of Parks and Recreation, for ownership of Stroud's Run. Member Patterson.
Mr. President, it was very clear to me last week during and following the meeting that some review is necessary in terms of how we got to where we are in terms of Stroud's Run, and especially in terms of the financials, but I thought it was more than that. There were questions from as basic a point as, what really is this that we would be acquiring? Why doesn't the state want it? Why would we want it? Has there been adequate public input, and of course, the cost and management plan? And so I thought I would back up a little bit and reiterate some of that, so please, if you do recall, indulge me a little here, and if you don't, hopefully you'll have some information. I did recopy some of the information that Council got previously and put it in the mailboxes. I did not copy the old version of the agreements and so on. You have updated versions of those. First of all, the Stroud's Run Park, we would actually receive a deed from the state, and it is 2,606 acres plus 161 acres of water. This is the park that we are talking about. Of that, about 65 acres, or less than, around 20 percent, is improved in some way, or involves recreation. The park is contiguous to other green space that we have acquired as a city, and the total amount of land that we would then own with the addition of Stroud's Run comes to about 3,000 acres that would belong to the city. This includes, and I've mentioned several times, Sells Park, which we acquired with an agreement with the WPA many years ago, and the similarity is that each year we have to report that, yes, we are indeed still using this as undeveloped recreational area. So we even have a little model for the type of arrangement that we're discussing. The second question was, why would the city not, or not, why would the state not want to keep the park? In my opinion, the state has let us down a little in terms of Stroud's Run. We've talked a great deal about the decrease in maintenance of the park, that the upkeep is not what it was a couple decades ago. Most people who have lived here for a while certainly remember a beach with lifeguards, and there have been continuing cutbacks on the state level. It does cost them a fair amount to maintain the park because of the fact that they are maintaining from a distance. They don't have the luxury of having an office on East State Street that can administer the park. Stroud's is one of the smaller state parks, and is a lower priority than the larger parks. How we got to where we are now, over a year ago, really, almost two years ago, when the first discussion began concerning this possibility, and the mayor and the ODNR officials began talking about, was this a feasible thing, that the city would take over management and ownership of Stroud's Run? As a result of that, one of our city surveys was done concerning how people in the city perceived that and felt that it would be an improvement, or we'd be less well-off, or it was a wash. In that survey, which was just a year ago, the fall of '05, 56.4 percent of those surveyed said that they felt that that would be a positive move if the city were to take over the ownership and management. 20 percent said no, they thought it would be a negative impact, and 23 said no impact or no opinion. The number-one concern of people who said no, it was a financial concern, and we will address that. Subsequently, there was a public meeting that was quite well-attended, and it was clear at that meeting that there was a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of support for the concept, also a great number of questions. A task force was formed, which met just about weekly, and put in hundreds of hours of work. A part of that was to identify goals, a mission statement, a vision statement, to try to find direction for the concept if it were to take place. This committee was made up of 14 people. It included environmentalists, OU administrators and OU faculty, city people, business people, representatives of the Chamber of Commerce and of Tourism. They worked tirelessly. I was asked about late winter by Wayne Key to begin attending those meetings as I was the Chair of the Arts Parks Recreation Committee, and therefore would be the person to bring this forward to Council. Those who were on that committee will vouch for the fact that from the beginning, I said the number-one question from Council will always be finance, that they will have a lot of questions concerning how it works, the minutia of the plan, and so on, but that it would come down to dollars and cents. Okay, I'm kidding there. Number four, why would the city want to take over ownership and management of Stroud's Run? It is an incredible green space. We hear a lot of discussion of the value of our hills, the beauty, the green space, preservation of all of those things, and so that is kind of the bottom line, but it's a bit more than that. We felt in discussions on the task force that the city could do a better job of establishing a management plan developed by people who love Athens, who live in Athens, and who care about Athens, and it would reflect our local values, not the values of a state entity. It also would provide us the opportunity to establish an endowment fund for the continued support of Stroud's Run. We also would be able to apply for grants for major projects at Stroud's Run. One of the major bottom-line reasons, however, is beyond that. It is for protection of the park, and much discussion took place during the agreement process in terms of timbering, mineral rights, oil, all of those factors, over and above the development question, which seemed a bit more obvious. Part of this became even more important just about a year ago, when there were proposals that timbering be done in public parks in order to mitigate the cost of running the parks, that we consider selling off some of those rights in terms of, on the state level. That didn't happen at that time. That does not mean that the topic could not come up again. If we owned the park, then we can establish our own deed restrictions, our own rules of the game, and we can prevent some of those things from ever happening to Stroud's Run, and protect it as an environmental, and educational, and a recreational site for all people in southeastern Ohio. Now, the cost. Much has been discussed about how the cost breaks down, and I do think that people became Paul suggested last week that perhaps a ballot issue would be appropriate, and I think that that is not a bad idea. I would propose that we adopt this first, and then move forward for a future possible support through a ballot issue, but there is another factor in that that I'll bring to you. Okay, this is the mayor's bare-bone expenses. That's what it says, right? Yes. The mayor's bare-bone expenses, that he came forward with, that he felt that the cost would be for personnel, and for materials and supplies, and then around a $6,000 holeback for cap for the future. So that came out to less than $100,000, and granted, that was bare bones. Well, then the question came up of, well, what about the other side? And the misconception that this meant that $100,000 would be spent on the park over and above revenue. So graphic number two, thank you, is the obvious revenue, and that's what I went with, just what is absolutely obvious. We know that the university has committed to $50,000 for the next year in terms of a fee to help support the park. The $18,000 I took from the records that we did get from ODNR in terms of absolute money that came in to the park through their division. Now, the question came up of, why don't they have more figures? The answer to that question seems to be that a lot of the fees were collected on an honor system, that when you went to a campsite, you just put some money in an envelope and put it in a box. They come through, they collect those boxes, and they enter the amount from several parks in one pot. So there isn't a breakdown for the local park, and that's part of the reason that there aren't accurate figures for that. So I just took what they did say, absolutely, that they had $18,000, and so then the bottom line, the total, the minimum total is $68,000, and then you go down, and the difference is $30,787. That does not even count things like increased revenue by renting the house, some things that seem like they could be pretty obvious. What I am saying is that we should be able to run this park for $30,000 or less, at least initially. That gives us time to create a management plan, to see if it runs the way that we're hoping it will, to accept partnerships that have been offered, and some of that is in terms of financial return, some of it is in terms of volunteerism, which could reduce personnel part-time hours. So my feeling is that we certainly can take a look at our figures. We have money in enhancement, that would be a possibility. We have money in tourism, that would be a possibility. There are other groups that have agreed to bring added value to the park. It doesn't even include... It doesn't even include a figure of income from concessions. It doesn't take away from fire or police expenditure because it can come from funds that those salaries would never come from. And back to the issue of the ballot issue, yes, we could put it on the ballot, but the smallest increment that you can put on the ballot would raise $130,000 a year, and at this point, all we're suggesting is $30,000 a year. So that doesn't mean that I don't think that that is a concept that we could pursue to continue the park or to improve the park, but I don't think that it's necessary before accepting the park. Not only that, but the offer has been made for before November 1st. That's why the special meeting for the second reading. It hasn't been made indefinitely, and so we are, at this point, to the end of the period of the offer. So I hope that people will carefully consider these possibilities and consider supporting the concept of Athens becoming the parents of Stroud's Run.
Further discussion? Member Weil.
I heard on the radio it was going to cost anything, so I'm kind of confused when I hear that on the radio, you stating that it won't cost us anything. Looking at the letters dated March 9th of 2006, to Gary Newman from Douglas Frank saying it's $50,000 for five years, or $10,000 a year, if I'm reading this correctly, this is the packet you just gave me. So it's not really $50,000 for the first year, but it's $10,000 a year, which would take a little bit off that $68,000 if I understand my math correctly.
There are some things that are not in your packet. There's one other school, one of the other colleges that's not included in the letters.
That's a $5,000 commitment?
No, it's a $10,000 commitment. They are $10,000, $10,000, and $5,000.
$10,000, $10,000, $5,000.
And the president matched, for a total of 50.
Who matched it?
The president's office.
We have that paper at work, too?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's where the $50,000 comes from. And Doug Franklin is here this evening to explain it from his perspective, and he was kind of our number cruncher, but this was the absolute most clear way I could state it. And I would agree that it could cost us nothing, but what I was putting on here is what somewhere, you know, we would be trying to come up with that other $30,000 in terms of income, which is very possible. $6,000 additional dollars concerning the rental of the house, that's a start right there. The other thing that, the other thing that I put on there is that the 49.5 from the state, we have suggested that it go directly into the endowment, so we have the endowment fund started, and then begin to approach people who might be interested in putting that in their will, groups that might wish to contribute to it, and begin to build the endowment fund with the idea that the interest from the endowment fund would eventually support the park.
Other comments from council members? Member Bishop.
When I first heard this, I thought it was a really good idea, okay? Then I was reminded something that my father always said, the more you have, the more you have to take care of, and I think that's really relevant here. Frankly, the, and I think we've mentioned this before in council, doing it on the cheap may not be as appealing, frankly, to me as having a budget that makes sure that their safety is taken care of, that there are personnel there. I actually spoke with someone, and he said that at one time, there were 14 full-time staff people taking care of the park. And that may be too large a number for us to even imagine, but I think once the city owns it, there will be, in a sense, a higher expectation from local people that the level of service is sufficient. And I'm looking here at this letter from you, Mayor Abel, to Rick Aramis of March 24th. It said, "To maintain the park as it is now would take a budget of approximately $157,000 a year." I guess what I'm saying is, I would like, I would like a proposal that said, here's, here's how we hope to maintain this as kind of a jewel of Athens. Now, rather than saying, how cheaply can we do it, and how many things can we cut? So I don't know whether, you know, whether the mayor might want to address what went into the 157, and does that represent kind of a different level of service, in which case, I'd kind of like to hear it and think on, you know, what that means in terms of our taking over the park and whether that would make it even more appealing on some level.
Really about the only thing that you're adding to go up $50,000 is you take out the part-time management that's just for 30-some weeks of the summer, you know, from March to October, and make that a full-time position. And that'll, by the time you add in health insurance and everything else, you'll up your budget about $50,000.
So you'd have the one, one person there all year round?
Right.
I mean, and right now, we're saying it's one person for six months out of the year. Is this a new person, or is this somebody that would be reassigned?
It would be new.
Okay, so this proposal suggests we hire a new person to, for part-time management of the park?
Well, there's actually, in the budget to get to that $50,000, there's about three different positions. One would be an overall supervisor, 35 weeks a year for 20 hours a week, okay? Then there would be 21 weeks that we just have about, you know, 40 hours a week, and 31 weeks at 10 hours a week, and going around the clock, but that way you send somebody out there each week. They make sure the trash is picked up, they inspect it, et cetera. But, and then there's a concession stand that you'd operate 153 days for eight hours a day. So there's a cumulative, there'd be part-time employees. I mostly budgeted the, most of those at $7 an hour, except for the supervisor, I budgeted at 15, and it's really running it with part-time people. But that's what I was asked, what's the minimum amount you can put in it? And so I developed a minimum amount. The maximum could be anywhere your imagination takes you. I mean, we could do the same thing with every department of the city.
True, true. Well, yeah, I mean, I think level of service is important, and I know that I've spoken with people who said they've been out there, and there were rowdy people, noisy people, people throwing potato chips in the lake, and if there are no, you know, if there isn't a presence out there, that pollutes, by the way, if there's not a presence there, that's what concerns me, that we kind of end up with a, heaven forbid, you know, like a dirty lake, you know, and a dirty park. And an unsafe one. So I guess my question now is, if there were a little bit more active management, so that there were more staff there, and maybe not a $7 an hour person selling, you know, ice cream, but somebody who had more responsibility for safety issues and helping people who needed help, what would a reasonable, you know, budget for that be? 157? 140?
Again, I think that's sort of just bare bones, because you're just putting there somebody there that's full-time responsibility of the park, but a lot of that goes into planning and such. I mean, just, you know, I could take any number, anywhere we want, and build it. I can do one at 150, I can do one at 300, I mean.
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess it's not. Right, I guess what I'm getting at is, it's not the money that drives the level of service. So I know if we had $500,000, we could have a fabulous park. What I'm saying is, like, in order to, for safety and so that there are people there, if somebody is in trouble, and, because as I say, I suspect there'll be a different expectation if the city owns it, you know, maybe kids will decide that's a really nice place to go and learn to drink. I hope I'm not giving anybody ideas. So I just think that we have to pay some attention to those issues, and so, you know, if we, what, set 160, that would be a reasonable?
And certainly, that's one of the advantages of looking down the road to the possibility of a ballot issue. Do we want to maintain the park at a higher level? And if that's the case, do we want it on a ballot so that the people decide if that's what they want money spent on?
How much does a ballot issue cost, and who pays for it?
I don't know that there's much cost in putting it on the ballot, or that City Council has to appropriate any money to do it. It's my understanding that a tenth of a percent of income tax would raise about $130,000, is that correct, Mayor?
A tenth of a percent would raise about $525,000.
What's the smallest? 100th of a?
A quarter of a tenth.
A quarter of a tenth.
Would raise a fourth of that, which is about 130 or so.
And that's the minimum?
That's about the minimum you can do, because you gotta go in tenths increments, you go in a fourth, a half, like, we have a half of a tenth for support of the community center, and it raises a little over $250,000 a year. And that means we can subsidize the community center memberships and some of the programming by having that base amount.
Member Bain.
I have to congratulate Carol for putting lipstick on this pig. Pretty good job, doing the best possible read on it, but I still am struck by what you said last time, Carol. A vote for this means that council agrees to cover the costs, bottom line, and that represents a problem for me with respect to the safety forces and the rest. A second thing that I find troublesome is that it has to be done by the 1st of November. I guess they're probably afraid that Strickland's going to get elected, huh? And maybe there'll be a new infusion of money into regional parks. And so I personally am somewhat offended by that approach, a little bit, not too much. A third thing that I would make, a point, you know, just a bullet, $126,000 is what Hawking was in debt for at a park that was in much better condition. Now, you could say there was some shenanigans going on, maybe as they were talking about selling and getting out of it, but Lake Snowden was a pretty good operation, and it was compact as opposed to spread out, and if they were in the hole, $126,000, that doesn't bode well for our future in this park. And last but not least, I guess, I would say that when you acquire land, you have some expectation of revenue on it usually. And we're going to probably double the size of the city with almost no expectation of any revenue coming, even residential generates $75 on each dollar we invest in it. We're going to be putting money into this, and I know it's all good to have green space, but I know Chris Wall told me that probably, and I hate to quote her, but I guess I'm going to, because I'm going to put some lipstick on my side of the pig, that the most they could raise was somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000, unless they had a Hawkswood type of things, that would be for like a Baker property to match a Clean Ohio. And so, I mean, there's a limited amount of money out there. Some of it, I hope, goes to Habitat, some of it goes to Food Pantry, and some of it goes to this. I mean, the most generous read, how much money can you pull out of this community? And I think there might be a little bit, and how much grants can we get? I mean, it's all just so speculative, and I have to decide my vote, and I guess you already know where I stand, on the basis of what's here. And so, it's pretty clear to me.
Other members of council? Anyone else wishing to speak first? Paul?
The discussion of level of service, I have to look at the level of service of police, litter, fire as well, and that's really where I'm coming from. I look at this and say, the minimum price we're looking right there maintains it as is, which everybody feels is not adequate, so it's going to cost us more eventually. If I'm reading what you told me about it, 20% of it's improved, it's 2600 acres, so we're talking about, what, 500 acres of improved area that has to be maintained?
65.
65 acres has to be maintained?
That includes trails.
Okay, so we're maintaining that?
So, yes, there's some level of maintenance there. That's one of the areas that we're pretty good on volunteer help, including rattle trails that the Equestrian Club has supported. You know, different groups have said that, the bicycle people have said that they're willing to help support. The Gun Range has a plan for some income there in terms of memberships to make it a safer entity. There are plans that could generate additional funds, just like this is bare bones, this is bare bones. This is only what the state said that they were taking in cash-wise, not including campsites, not including any boat rentals. So there, on both sides, there are additional possibilities.
If we put this 49.50 into endowment, wasn't it earmarked for operating costs? And would we have to give it back to them? It's not earmarked for operating costs.
It is not. It, well, it is, in order that we can operate the park, they did agree that we could put it in the endowment fund, but then if we return the park to the state, that if we can document expenditures, we can deduct that from the 49.5.
Do we have an estimate on when we're going to have to repave that parking lot there and the boat ramp? Time-wise, how much is it going to cost us in the near future just to maintain it?
It's one of the reasons we've got cap in there.
5%.
And the roads are county.
And the parking lot is county?
No.
And the boat ramp is county? And the toilets are county?
Nobody's saying that it's not going to have any expenses. That's what these people are being paid for.
Other comments by council members? Anyone from the audience wishing to speak, please?
I'm Doug Franklin, I was on the task force. Kind of wondering how I should approach this. I mean, I could go and try to pick apart everybody's negative thoughts. I had a rare opportunity to be the moderator at the Snowden issue down in Albany, so for some reason or other, I seem to have gotten myself into a couple of things lately, mostly because of a bent towards mine, an analytical bent. I like to analyze things. I don't really go through anything without looking at it, turning it over three and four and five times. I was interested when I heard a comment from council at one point in time, where we really didn't know anything about what the task force had done, and Carol made a pretty good case for the amount of time that we put in. I don't know if anybody recalls ever seeing something like this. This is what I fondly call my sick mind. I tend to put things down, I'm a visual person, so I can kind of articulate, you know, what's on this paper, and I can see what's going on. Each one of these things indicates either a document that was reviewed or an interview that was conducted by no less than three or four people. We did a qualitative and a quantitative analysis, we looked at past budgets, we looked at, we talked to the people in the state, I had various different classes doing statistical analysis, we conducted an open forum with a community that had at least, I think, 30, 35 people there, and we came up with our recommendations. And I have not, I don't think the committee has ever strayed from those recommendations. This is not a freebie. It's 3,000 acres, it's $3 million worth of land, and you're getting it for $27,000. It's not a real, you know, for me, as a person that's been doing business for 30 years, it seems like a pretty good deal to me. I'm just kind of confused on how we go down these. And certainly, we can pick it apart, and I will acknowledge that I have not created a management plan, I created a business projection of five years. My budget is a little bit different than the mayor's, it's a little bit different than Carol's, it's probably a little bit different than the city's. It indicates that there's about 49 grand worth of revenue to be generated on there. I find it amazing if we couldn't think about generating $49,000 on a 160-acre lake and 2,600 acres of land. I re, or I edited the statement in the, in the agreement. I re, or I edited the statement in the agreement to make sure that we have the ability to generate targeted revenue. Not a general access fee, but targeted revenue. Revenue to be generated off the gun range. Revenue to be generated on the lake on various different activities. The entire basis for everything that we did was based on the recreational, educational use of that park. And consequently, that's where the $50,000. You know, I don't know if I made a whole lot of friends at the university, you know, pushing so hard for that $50,000. I donated 5,000 from campus recreation, which I'm in charge of. I convinced my dean of the importance of $10,000 for the academic activities that go on in our college. And we convinced the dean of arts and sciences that there was significant educational activity going on for him to donate 10,000. And I think everybody together and the mayor convinced the president that, you know, we had budget units donating 25 and could he donate 25. So that's the $50,000 there. That is, from what I understand, you know, a fairly concrete flow of revenue. I think you've all seen this. You know, you probably, if you haven't, this is my spreadsheet. It's a five-year plan. It is not a management plan. I mean, eventually, you get to the point where, you know, you've donated X number of hours and, you know, I'm also working on a dissertation, so I'm running out of time. It's the best-case scenario for offsetting expenses with a certain amount of revenue. One of the things, and I will say this, you know, every time I talk about Stroud Run, and the reason why Snowden was so much different than Stroud Run is, you know, one of the things that we're trying to do in Stroud Run is to protect a Snowden-like activity. I mean, there's nobody, the, one of the students that I had, the first thing that came out of his mouth, he was from Hawking College, he said, "Well, you should sell off part of your timber to generate money." That lasted about a half an hour at a meeting and he never came back. That wasn't the goal. That wasn't our mission. That wasn't our vision of the park. The park was a natural, the people of Athens wanted a natural setting. How much of that park stays formalized recreation is and should be part of what the commission does in establishing that? The park may not look the same as it does now. It may not look, there may be some things now that aren't there in the future. Certainly, if the city, or if the state maintains it, that they have to let part of it go back because it costs money to maintain that ground. But if the city were to take care of it, there's a lot of people in this community that are interested in that kind of things. I think everybody around the table and almost everybody here will acknowledge the fact that Athens is unique. Athens has a unique view of what nature is about. And that's what that setting, that's what they want out of that. That was Dow's original vision, was preservation, was recovering the land that had been damaged by poor farming techniques. And so, part of this is this continuation or this rebirth of this vision. As I said before, my budget is not like the mayor's. I called for about 4950 the first year, and it goes up to about 63,000 over the next five years. I call for $27,000 a year from the city. $27,000 will not buy you a fireman. It will not buy you a police person. It will not buy you anything. It's $27,000. That could go up or could go down depending on, or it probably won't go up, it certainly can go down depending on the kind of revenue that you could generate. The more activity, the more people that donate time. I mean, you know, a huge number of trails are going in up there or that are being maintained at no cost or very little cost. Whether it be by the Athens Trail Commission or the Equestrian, the Horseback Riders, you know, Association, the Trail Bike Riders, you know, whatever those groups are, they're the people that are maintaining your trails. Those are the people that, part of those 14 people that were hired, they were maintaining trails before. At one time, the Stroud's budget was $300,000. I don't think anybody, the state's not going back up to 300,000. We're certainly not going to 300,000. I, one of the paradoxes that we found was, and the reason why the state wants to get rid of this is, it is not one of their gems. Their gems have lodges on them. Their gems generate lots of money. They either have golf courses or large lakes or lodges and cabins and those kind of things. And it generates a lot of money. But what we found is, as the money goes up, as the revenue goes up, so do the expenses. I would not come here to tell you that we want to put more money into that park from a revenue generation standpoint. It's going to get to a point where that's all you can do. You can generate a certain amount of money. But as you start to increase that, as you start to bring in more and larger revenue generation, you will certainly drive your costs up. I'll answer any questions as far as the task force, what we did, anything about the budget that I've created. I certainly understand there were questions about finance. I can tell you about my finances. But I did want you to know that we did a lot of, a lot of research. We had two or three classes that was doing qualitative and quantitative research on this. So it wasn't one of these things where we all got around the table and say, gee, what a great idea, let's go spend some money. Are there any questions? Yes, sir?
In terms of generating fees, what things are you particularly thinking of?
You know, it'd be real difficult to sit up here, or it'd be real easy for me to list, but, you know. The key, I think, right now, if I were going to look at targeted user fees, certainly the gun range would be a place for targeted user fees. Whether that would be for a membership kind of basis to use that to put money back into that, to that facility, right now, it's inadequate for anything, you know, that it was originally designed for, which originally was for a gun range for long-term. But there's not, I don't believe, any gun ranges in the Athens area. There's, I think, one over in Wellston. I don't know of any around the area. So that's a unique thing. I like unique things. You know, we have a ice skating rink and a 50-meter pool and an indoor tennis facility, and those are unique. We get lots of participation, targeted participation off of that. I always think lessons, you know, learn-to programs, learn-to swim programs, learn-to canoe programs, learn-to kayak programs. A variety of those kind of things can generate money that comes in over what the operational costs would be. As the mayor and Carol said, you know, there's a building out there. That building was meant for the park manager. And the park manager no longer, we don't have a park manager anymore. So it gives us some revenue generation capability in renting that facility. Couldn't tell you some of the other ones. I'd have to sit down and have a conversation with, you know, some primarily parks kind of people to find out how you generate, you know, money off of a park like that.
Other comments?
I just want to thank the task force because I know everyone put a lot of work into it and, so I just want to acknowledge this really important work.
Thank you.
Now, I just have a question here. Were there, I'm sorry, I don't have the list in front of me. Were there city employees on this task force or was it all, oh, here it is?
Wayne Keys was on it.
Wayne Key.
Kevin Schwartzoff was on it.
Okay.
As far as I know, those were the only two city employees.
Candy. What is Candy Bradley's?
Ah, she was the...
Secretary.
A secretary, okay.
It was really interesting to see how the task force formed over a year and a half. And again, I draw these parallels. I draw these kind of comparisons between the Snowden project and Stroud Run. I just thought that they were interesting, that they all fell within a certain amount of time. Listening to President Light talk about what his vision was and his developers and the fact that they were going to sell off a portion of that, it's a, I think in some people's minds, that's what the opportunity of taking Stroud Run was. And that got dismissed so quickly, particularly after our study. After our study, there wasn't any, there wasn't ever any discussion about development. There wasn't any discussion about selling off the lands. There wasn't any discussion about selling off timber. There wasn't any discussion about, you know, creating a larger, more heavily concentrated recreation park. It was much more of a, we were going to maintain this as a low-impact, natural park. So again, that's a little bit different when you start talking about things that drive the costs up. Heavy recreation drives costs. That, in a nutshell, is what's happening to ODNR right now. They cannot afford to maintain that paradox of growing facilities and having inadequate revenue to offset those expenses. We acknowledge that right up front, and we developed a budget that was a workable budget.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one more question.
One more.
One more. If, in the, in the future, let's say, five years from now, could we sell off timber? I mean, I'm just curious. In other words...
Not the way the agreement is written.
The way the agreement is written, we could not...
No.
And do any logging.
That's right. And that's why we wrote the, that's why we wrote the agreement that way.
Okay.
We would not, I mean, that's, that basically doesn't solve anything. Yes, sir?
Am I correct, though, that if we don't do this, that literally next year, the state could sell off the trees?
The state has every right to do whatever they want with their...
The state could start trail rides with four-wheel vehicles through them and charging for it?
I couldn't tell you what the state would do or wouldn't do.
But they could.
Who do you think...
I don't know. I don't know what their capabilities are. I do know that part of the discussions that we had, there were various different people saying exactly that. They could do this. They could sell this. They could sell off pieces of land. They could sell off whatever. And I can't tell you that's what the case would be. I can tell you why the November 1st deadline, which is kind of interesting because we've been doing this now for two years. We started this thing two years ago. And we brought this to council, what, in June of 2006? Or was it May 2006?
It's about May.
It's not like one of these, it's not like one of these things where we're trying to back everybody up. What's happening is, everybody knows the election is there. You have a group that's in. They have the control right now of being able to do this. And they want to use this as a model. That was the original plan, was to use this as a model for those communities that had the capability and the capacity to take these kind of parks and make them local parks. Their tracking indicates that most of the people that use that park are local. Now, not necessarily Athens, but they're local. They're southeast Ohioans from various counties around. And again, that's more possibility for targeted user fees is those counties around accessing the park for various different functions.
Any other comments? Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue?
Thank you very much.
My name's Chris Fall, having been quoted by Nancy already tonight. And I was on the task force. I want to talk specifically about the conservation, conservation protection, local protection versus state protection. Local protection for this park will ensure that there's going to be a longer-term protection of the biodiversity values that are found in this park. And this park has a lot of really unique areas, has rock-out croffings, has, you know, a lot of high-value habitat, high-value wilderness-type settings that people, when we were doing our research, really admire and acknowledge as being a true gem. The state, as Doug has said, doesn't see this as a true gem because it's a podunk little park down way off, doesn't have its own little freeway exit and everything. And because of that, there is a tendency for large bureaucracies to kill by benign neglect. They think they're not doing anything to it, but by having it so low on the priority list for any sort of management or facility upgrade, facility, any sort of, of putting any sort of extra money into it puts it at a risk. Right now, you have problems with the lake. The lake is at risk of having nutrient buildup, partially from the watershed, but a lot from the geese, you know, and also from species of plants that are found in the lake that need to be removed. The state has no plans to address that. The city can address it. The city can access actually other management and grants and such to address water quality issues. Water quality issue is a huge issue for the lake. And, you know, as Athens Conservancy, we've been trying to address that issue on a watershed basis. But if that water gets to be, have such a high nutrient level, it can go into eutrophication, which means you have a dead nasty, stinky lake. Nobody's going to use it. The state has that at a very low level. Right now, a lot of the management that's being done at the park is being done by local people. A lot of people in Athens are concerned about capacity. Do we have the professional capacity to take care of this park? And my overall feeling, after working with people at Athens Conservancy, Athens Trails, the university, and the Strouds Run Task Force, we have a lot more capacity available than the state does. People are already doing management of trails, development of trails. That takes, you know, high-level expertise. New trails are being developed by volunteers. Management plan will never, ever be written for this park from the state. They've already said that. A management plan is essential for this park to protect the resources that are there. You can do that at a local level. We have the expertise. We have multiple departments at the university has the expertise, and we have expertise in the community who can do it. Now, I mean, I've seen management plans written for parks larger with more problems done on local level by volunteers. It's not impossible. Local control will be able to protect the, all the volunteer hours that go into it that's already being done. We, as local control, local management, and local planning, will be able to direct that into the areas that are needed. You know, protection of watershed quality, watershed and water management problems can be addressed locally, and it will ensure the efficiency of what's going on already. The state will neglect it, you know, and that's just how it is. There's also, you know, Senate bill that, they were talking about doing the drilling and forest management, quote-unquote. That's not dead. It's not dead at all. It was, it's never made out of committee. I have been told by several people who do forest issues that the lame duck session could be a very, very, shall we say, bloody session when it comes to environmental and natural resource bills, especially if Strickland gets in. Because there's going to be a feeling that they're going to want to get out as much as they can before a new mindset sets in. And it's been told to me by several people who do forest management and lobbying for these sort of things, for protection of forests, that that's on, that's one of their number-one priorities, that they want to get out in that lame duck session. There's also possibilities of, there is possibility of selling it off, selling sections off. That takes legislation active, but it's a possibility. Local control will ensure that that will not happen. The deed, there's deed restrictions that Lake Snowden will never, ever be able to happen to Stroud Run. And we made sure, we read it all together as a task force, the conditions in this because of what was going on at Snowden. So I think for conservation, the conservation ideals and the resources that are out there, the only thing I really see is long-term protection is to get local control of it because the state will neglect it into oblivion. We have the capacity and we have the expertise to make sure that it will be, remain a gem into the future and that we can become a really nice model for other communities out there. And we can lead the way for local control and protecting natural resources at a local level. So I would really encourage them to look beyond the amount of money that we're talking about, which is, you know, one-half of what we spend for Halloween night. I mean, you really start thinking about it. To ensure that long-term protection and coordination happens for this, that has so much potential, you know, recreation, economic, huge amount of protection, so.
Thank you. Other comments for council, please?
My name is Bill Hayes. I think most of council knows me. And I'm the, of the faction that supports the possibility of putting together a club to support the gun range out at Stroud's Run. And I'm going to compliment, you know, Carol and Doug both on bringing forth the fact that it certainly does represent an area of the park that could generate revenue. However, I'm going to fault them in that I don't think that their estimates are anywhere near optimistic enough. I go out to the range rather frequently, and it is rare that I don't while out there, encounter doctors, lawyers, university professors, families, even the occasional city council member.
What's your council members' hack?
It's kind of like golf, you know? If you're not a golfer, you don't know who golfs. You know, you don't know who goes to the golf course. You have no idea where the golf course even is for the most part. I certainly don't, you know? But the gun range, I do know where it is, and I do know that it is frequently used. And I do know that there's a high level of interest. Because as Doug pointed out, it is kind of a unique gun range in this area, but you want to... Because as Doug pointed out, it is kind of a unique gun range in this area, but you were wrong about one thing, Doug. There are a lot of gun ranges in this area. They are private clubs. Strouds Run is kind of unique in that area. There's an even more feeble remnant of a range over at Lake Hope, but it's really sad. Strouds Run, because of its geography and its location, represents the opportunity to develop, I think, a tourism jewel for this area. And I would point out, if you've read any of the information that was provided to you by the state when they talked about the camping area, pop quiz time, when was the only time during the year that the camping area at Strouds Run was full? Yes. Folks, sportsmen in this state provide millions upon millions upon millions of dollars in tax revenue every single year. We're not the Sierra Club. We're not the trust-of-ireans. We're not out there trying to, I don't know, hug the trees and save the world and, you know, kiss the baby whales. We pay the bills. We provide the money to support these activities. And guess what? We've been doing it ever since the park system started, and we're not about to stop. In fact, go down to OVTNE, down on Simpson Avenue sometime. Look how many people work there. Think about the tax revenue that this city generates from the activity that comes from there. And ask the folks at work there, and they're going to tell you that every student, almost every student that, from OU, and I see many, many students from OU out at the gun range frequently. They stop at OVTNE and buy their ammunition on their way out to the range. Now, that group does need some supervision. We certainly have some problems with that, and we would love to have the opportunity to help educate them and ensure that they do operate in a little more responsible manner. Please give us that opportunity. We are more than willing to take upon that burden. Now, back to the money side of the thing. Besides just the, you know, the actual dues that people will willingly pay, and in probably far larger numbers than you might estimate, let's get back to some of the tax issues. There are taxes above and beyond sales taxes levied on the sale of every box of ammunition, every firearm, every bow, every arrow in the state of Ohio and in states all over the country. Those funds are collected primarily at the federal, but to some extent at state level. And they are set aside for specific grant programs that can in turn be utilized to expand gun ranges and to help with environmental remediation. In fact, gun clubs across America are one of the largest procurers of grant monies for environmental remediation and wildlife habitat improvement. Two areas that we certainly do need, and I think a few people will agree with me on that, out at Strouds Run, and we need the money to do it. Give us a chance. We'll go get the check. Any questions?
I think you scared them, Bill.
Well, I'm a little enthusiastic, you know. Okay?
Thank you very much. It's hard to believe that man dressed up as a nun for Halloween won the year. Other people wishing to speak before council?
Hi, my name is Paige Alos, and I'm the Director of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Also reside at 24 Cable Lane. And I'm here tonight to address the tourism aspect of Strouds Run, which I think is an important component that we haven't really, until Bill spoke a few minutes ago, we haven't really touched upon yet. By the way, I want to point out to you, Field and Stream Magazine recognized Athens County and the Wayne National Forest as the number-one place to hunt whitetail deer in the country this year. Hunters bring a lot of money to our area. With regard to Strouds Run, you know, I just remain optimistic about the future of that if the city takes the lead with it. We have seen what the state has done. We do know that the budget is decreasing with regard to their maintenance of the park. I want you to be prepared. I want you to think not about next year, not about the year after that, but about 10 years from now, when this council may look different, when the town may look different. I want you to think about what that piece of property will mean to the city at that point. There are some very positive things that are getting ready to happen specifically to our county. And of course, they're related to tourism because that's what I like to talk about, but they actually have the possibility of impacting a lot of other people in this area. Of course, the highway project that's going in. It's going to become easier for people to get here. I like that. There are three big tourism development projects in the works that Athens County happens to fall within. Two of them are being sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. They're called Share Your Heritage projects. These projects focus on conservation and preservation. Two different groups from the National Trust have visited Athens County within the last two months, and they could not believe the natural resources that were here. The historic buildings are fantastic as well, but we talked at length about the opportunities for Strouds Run and what it could mean to this area, the economic impact that it represents for this area. So I know that we're looking at costs. I know that we're thinking about what it might cost us next year, what it might cost to replace the parking lot or update the dock or all the maintenance issues that come with a piece of property that size. But I really want you to think about the economic impact of Strouds Run over the course of the next 10 to 15 years. The cabins and bed and breakfasts are growing in Athens County, and there are several of them that have properties adjacent to the park, and they thrive because people want to stay there and be close to Strouds Run. Some of them offer horseback riding straight from their cabins. Some of them offer bike riding. Some of them will provide adventure weekends using kayaking or canoeing on Strouds Run. And these cabins and bed and breakfasts are getting bigger. Their lodging tax revenue from the second quarter of 2005 to the second quarter of 2006 doubled. They're only getting bigger. In fact, they have a meeting on the other side of town tonight that I'm not at because I'm here talking with you, begging you to take some consideration of what's happening. I want you to be prepared. Someone said to me the other day, when I was out at the National Timber and Outdoor Show, that all these things are getting ready to happen, and what if we get caught unprepared? What if we don't? What if we're not prepared for a lot of people to begin taking notice of southeast Ohio and specifically of Athens County? Keep in mind also that the city of Athens has the infrastructure to support visitors. We have the hotels. We're getting more hotels. That makes me a little nervous. I have a lot of work to do. We're getting more attention paid to this area, and we need to respect the fact that we are unique. We need to capitalize on the fact that we are unique, and we need to preserve and conserve our uniqueness. I'm happy to entertain any questions. If any of you would like to stop by the Visitors Bureau at any time and talk about what we're doing and look at the maps that we have. John Nouse was kind enough last week. He's worked tirelessly for the last couple of days, printing and printing maps for me, because we've had so many people ask us specifically about Strouds Run and about the Athens Preserve and South Park area. And so we are developing areas in our visitor center where people can come in and look at those maps. Our little copied map that we have of all those trails back there, it's not the prettiest map that we have. It's the cheapest map that we have. It's the most popular map that we have. People want to know what's happening. I probably gave 10 of those maps away today. We gave a ton of them away at the National Timber and Outdoor Show to people from all over the country. They could not believe that we had all of this right here in the middle of this little area. So I encourage you to conserve and preserve the uniqueness and think about not what the cost is going to be next year, but what it might provide to the city 10 years from now.
Thank you, Paige. Other members of the audience?
Oh, wait. May I ask her a question?
Sure.
Sorry. Oh, Paige. Some of these exciting opportunities that are arising, aside from more business at Bed and Breakfast, could you elaborate a little bit? Give me a little picture of what some of these things might be?
Absolutely. You know, ecotourism is the fastest-growing segment of the tourism industry today. And ecotourism centers around those adventures that are related to the earth. And what we're finding is that a lot of families are beginning to look at this area as a place to come with their children to learn about things. And there are a lot of great big cities in Ohio that have a lot of great metro parks, but our parks are different because they give people a chance to sort of find their own way in things and to learn more about it on their own basis. We also have several outdoor adventure experts who are running programs right now out of Strouds Run. Mimi Morrison and her Touch the Earth Adventure program is a great example of someone who's developed a living and a business, helping other people from outside of the area learn about nature, challenge themselves in ways that they haven't been challenged before. And Strouds Run is a perfect place to do that. The waves aren't too big. You can get from one side of the lake to the other very easily. And it's a great place to learn about nature. And that's one of the things that I know that the task force has really talked about and focused on. And it's one of the things that we want to capitalize on from a tourism standpoint, is that it's an easy place to learn something new. It also represents a place for us to sort of expand our boundaries a little bit. While I don't see it happening in the first year that we're open, I definitely see the potential for more groups and festivals to come out there. I see the potential with the changes going on at Lake Snowden for some of our bigger camping groups who may have camped out there previously. We have a couple of groups that have camped out at Lake Snowden for years. They might be looking for a new place to camp, and we need to be able to retain those visitors to this area, especially groups that have 100 to 125 people that come in at a time. They look forward to coming here every year, and we want to make sure that they can continue to come here. And, you know, from our standpoint, we're going to continue to go after the group tour market. And that means that we're going to be able to tell our story to a lot of people at one time. And we know that those people that come on group tours are more likely to come back on their own individually and see those things that they saw initially the first time here. And Strouds Run is a great example of a place where we could take a group tour. They can have a picnic out there. They might be able to try their hands at walking through the trails, kayaking or canoeing, fishing. There's all kinds of things that people can do out there. And, you know, we see a lot of potential. And again, if anyone wants to come by the office and look at the maps and listen to me and Gina and Elena and Michelle talk to you about how excited we are at the prospect of this, I would be prepared to stay for a while. You might want to bring a snack, so...
Thank you, Paige. We have read one ordinance during a special session, and it has been one hour now. I really hate to enforce the three-minute limit to all speakers, and I really have ignored it tonight terribly. And if people are wanting to speak in opposition to this, I'm not going to institute it now at this late hour. But I would ask those that still wish to speak before council, please do, but please try to keep your comments concise. Bob, did you wish?
Tourists like Strouds Run because it's free.
Your name and address, please.
It's Robert Sumney, 20, Briarwood. Students and tourists like at Strouds Run because it is free. When the city takes over, you're already discussing revenue streams to pay for it. When you charge for beach and camping, when you put parking meters in, the possibility there, while you let people in for free, you're still looking for ways to charge people. And according to the Strouds Run Economic Feasibility Study, the more you charge, the less people are going to attend the park. When you talk about the state not giving up any of its gems currently, and this is according to the Strouds Run Economic Impact Recommendations, currently every single state park of a comparable or larger size in Ohio is incurring operating losses and is in the red. This indicates that the state parks in Ohio are not able to generate a sufficient amount of revenue. We know that. As of the current situation for the city to operate the park, subsidizing would have to take place in some way. Okay, so we've just mentioned some of the add-ons as people walk into the park, being charged to camp, being charged to swim, being charged to park. One of the things that, at the tail end of the revenue generation suggestions says, "The final recommendation, raising taxes, would be the most difficult one to gain approval for or to implement." This option would have the greatest effect on the community as it would require citizens of Athens to dig into their pockets to help fund Strouds Run. Also, the talk of property tax was mentioned in this as well, not just to the city of Athens, but also to the Athens Canaan Township. So these would be final resorts if all these great things don't come about. It's terrific that the bed and breakfasts are burgeoning out that way, but are we going to charge them to use the lake at that point? Is there going to be some sort of licensing? Why should these people get it for free and people going into the park would have to pay for something like that? Again, that decreases use. It does not increase use, especially when you consider that there's already a number of regional parks that offer a lot of these same services for free. So people are going to generate, are going to gravitate, I should say, more towards free than they are to where you're talking about targeted user fees. When we talk about, for instance, Torch Park, which is currently under the operation of the Athens County Commissioners, which is 40 acres, they already say that that's a very difficult operation, just in 40 acres. They don't understand how the city of Athens is going to be able to operate Strouds Run. When we talk about selling off rights to timber and gas, I have to really regard that as a scare tactic, to be honest with you. I think that if we're talking about Republicans being turned out of office up in Columbus, I think the last thing they want to do is something as unpopular as this, if they ever wanted to return. Putting Strouds to a popular vote after adaptation of this ordinance would be like, you know, to use the cliche, putting the cart before the horse. You adapt the ordinance and then ask people if they want to do this or not or if they want to be taxed for this or not. Obviously, the popular vote should be the thing that's out front before you adapt. You have the concerns about the Dow Dam. Once that is supposedly up to state standards, it's turned over to the city. Again, if anything ever happened with the Dow Dam, is the city prepared to deal with that? And while a lot of people would say, "Well, it hasn't done anything yet, and it won't in the future, or we'll take that chance," I don't think as governors of a city that you really can let something like that just go by the wayside without giving it very serious thought. One of the other things in terms of charging target user fees, again quoting from the feasibility study, "Quote, 'High levels of unemployment and low levels of per capita income in Athens County create an environment that is not conducive to parks' potential for revenue generation through user fees for services.'" I also, again, have to say that if tourists can use surrounding parks for free, the likelihood of a giant revenue source from them is decreased. We have the other thing that Councilwoman Bishop brought up, that if you own something, it's your responsibility to take proper care of it. And we have to look back at the city. And if we're going to operate the Strouds Run on $98,000, a concern I would have is, are we going to stretch current city services in order to get out there and do work that needs to be done? And in fact, in the feasibility study, it says that in order to keep that $99,000 budget, and I'm filling that in, current city services will likely suffer. The study states that, quote, "For example, cutting grass at Strouds Run might preclude cutting the grass as often at another city park. Fixing a shelter or a water line might mean that some other less critical repair is delayed." We're already looking at the condition of the pool. We're not satisfied with that, and we're talking about perhaps initiating a tax or having a tax voted on to either restore the pool or put in new pools, indoor, outdoor. We look at the median strips. I live on Briarwood. The largest median strip that we have on that street gets mowed maybe once or twice a summer, and in the meantime, the grass can grow three or four feet high. That's already a city service that's lacking. Does that get even worse when our attention also turns itself to Strouds Run? The condition of the, when we talk about tourism, we're talking about the brick streets. And the city made a big commitment to the brick streets because that was going to make us look retro and historic and whatnot, add to our charm as a small city in southeast Ohio. And if you've driven on the bricks, they're in shoddy condition. You're talking about bricks that are sticking up where people can trip over them. You're talking about bricks that have disappeared and haven't been repaired. You're talking about bricks that have fallen by the wayside, and cement has been slopped down to take up for the... down to take up for the bricks. You're talking about, if you're driving on North Court Street, God help you with the newly laid brick. You know, you would need a terrain vehicle to drive on that. In fact, you've already had a number of people that I've talked to who said they tried to avoid driving on that part of the street for that very reason, not a great commercial idea. We talk about Halloween. The city has taken almost 30 years and still trying to figure out how to cover the cost of $60,000 for Halloween. You have to pick and choose. If Halloween is really important to you, then you have to put things like Stroud's Run aside. A lot of the questioning also, why hasn't a lot of the specific planning been done? Again, someone suggested that, well, this has been two years in the offing. It hasn't just been thrown at you. Well, you know, and at this point, we still don't hear any specific ideas or plans for Stroud's Run, apart from wishful thinking and what, you know, the economy could do in 10 or 20 years. The final couple of points that I'd like to make, that we talk about having an endowment fund. And basically, I think you would need, according to the study here, you would need $2 million just to have $100,000 of interest generated from that money. That's going to take a long time to generate $2 million, especially if it only comes in at $5,000 or $10,000 a shot. And again, that's not money to be used for current operating costs. I'm not really that concerned about the first two or three years. The debate here is not about the first two or three years of Operation Stroud's Run. We're talking about after that, when all official partnerships are concluded and basically the city is on its own or waiting for people to die. So, you know, I don't think that that's the way that we want to plan operation costs. Again, I would like you to seriously consider what we're getting into. Someone in discussions last week suggested that this was more of a regional idea rather than a local, and I think that's a terrific idea because if, as some people have earlier suggested, that the whole region stands to gain, then I don't understand why more regional partners have not come forth and committed to this plan and letting the city of Athens go at it alone and therefore incurring the brunt of the costs. Thank you very much.
Other comments?
Hello. I'm Peter Kotzis from 1 Bryan Road, and I am an Athens native, and I was born and raised here. And a lot of my early outdoor experience was at that park. And unfortunately, in the last few years, I've noticed a lot of those services have really been eliminated. And I think Carol kind of mentioned a lot of that right off the bat. But as a member of, actually, I'm the president of the Athens Bicycle Club, and I try to keep in contact with a lot of the state parks. And at this point, it's impossible to even get anybody on the phone about this park. It's unfortunate, but I think that the city cannot do a worse job of maintaining this park because, right off the bat, you're going to have somebody to call if you have a comment, an issue, or a question. At this point, you have just a group of people that are just absent. And so I would really, I'd really like to see us take that chance and attempt to try to rectify this park and bring it back to some level, maybe not the level that it was when I was a kid, but something that's better than what it is currently.
Thank you. Other comments? Thank you all. Oh, I'm sorry. Phil?
Phil Cantino, 33 Cable Lane. Of course, you've heard from me several times before. You know I support the ordinance, so I will be very brief. I realize this is a difficult decision, it's an important decision, but one thing I ask is that you take a long-term view on this. This is an extraordinary opportunity. In the state of Ohio, probably in the country, there must be rather few communities the size of Athens that have a, what, 2,700-acre park as a recreational and educational resource for the citizens. This cannot, this is bound to attract people to Athens and to OU as well as increasing tourism revenues, as Paige pointed out. I understand from what Carol has said that this is going to cost a maximum of $30,000 a year initially, and that is due in part to the generous contribution from the university on this, a very important partner. It is probable that that cost will go down as this endowment is built up gradually, as I'm sure it will be, and there are a lot of people that really care about that park. And, you know, in the context, $30,000 for any one of us is a lot of money, but in the context of the whole city budget, this is not a large sum of money, particularly when you think about the benefit this park will have over, you know, generations. This has been pointed out, but again, it's very important to me, is being city property, the park will be protected if the state legislature, in its wisdom, decides to go ahead with the idea of logging or drilling in state parks. And as has been pointed out, the agreement with the ODNR has protections, prohibitions against commercial logging, against drilling, off-road motor vehicle use, and commercial development. So the environment in the park really will be much safer than it would be in the state hands. And I agree with what's been pointed out by Chris, among others, that there is more than enough expertise and enthusiasm in this community to develop a really fine management plan and to manage the park wisely. So, you know, I ask you, again, to think in the long term. You know, 50 years from now, is anyone going to know or care if, you know, the city's budget in 2007 was a bit stretched, if we had to mow median strips a little less frequently? I doubt it, but I think that people will appreciate this magnificent park that, you know, this mayor and this city council had the foresight to acquire when there was the opportunity, to acquire for future generations, if that is indeed what you decide to do. So I'll leave you with that. Thank you for hearing me again on this.
Thanks, Phil. Seeing no others, moving on. Ordinance 11906, an ordinance amending Athens City Coup Title III Administrative, Chapter 3.10 Alarm Systems. Having addressed all items on this special session of Athens City Council, City Council stands adjourned onto the Planning and Development Committee meeting. Want to take a quick break? We'll take a couple-minute break while those that are not interested in our committee meetings exit room.
So the main item that we have on our agenda is to talk about the comprehensive plan and where we go next with that. I do have a list. I asked each of the people who were comparing the different versions of the plan, people were looking at different pieces of it, to send a list of things that they found that were discrepancies. So some of them are the larger issues that people spoke to earlier in the public hearing. Some of them are kind of details. Carol went through the things related to arts and transportation, and some of the things are really very specific wording, like the fact that it doesn't reference performing arts specifically might make the city ineligible for some grant funding possibilities. So some of them are, you know, fairly small things, but that could be significant. So we have a list, and I will make copies of this for everybody. We did have a little work session with people who were able to meet over the lunch hour, what, a week and a half ago, to go over what are the things that had been found and kick around ideas about how to proceed. That group included people from the neighborhood associations and several members of council. And coming out of that, we felt that the most expedient way to proceed, since the plan is something that needs to be approved by council and the planning commission, would be to go ahead and approve it and, at the same time, pass a resolution requesting that the planning commission look at those urgent areas of difference that were identified by folks who spoke with us from the neighborhood associations, the omission of the view sheds and vistas, the revision around accountability, and the use of the word "will" rather than the word "should," other way around. So those, that we would ask the planning commission to work with us right away to come to a resolution on those issues. But instead of getting bogged down in trying to pass something different and go back and forth with two different versions of the plan on the table, that we go ahead and adopt it and then work with the planning commission to address those differences. At the same time, we have created the Comprehensive Plan Review and Advisory Commission, and I'm going to be putting together an application form. I hope to have those available next Monday, and then give people two weeks to be able to apply so that that group could immediately begin working on what is the process for review and update for the comprehensive plan that seems like it fits within the charge that that task force would have. So that is one possibility for how we may proceed, but I know that Nancy has some different ideas. We should open this up to some discussion.
I was not there for the work session, and one of the problems that I have is that we have already published the initial version of the plan. If it's more, it's been published. Now we have another version, and there's a discrepancy. When I asked Gary about it, he clarified and said that, and we said, "The plan," and it's supposed to be the same plan. So it seems to me that either we take these out of the initial plan or put them into the other one, and there shouldn't be much discussion on it. It seems to me, since when I asked the mayor, he said there was no difference, that it wouldn't really be something we'd even have to make a resolution on. We could just send it to him and ask them to revise it and send it back to us with these in, because they did say it was the same, it's just rearranged. You know, just a small matter, but on the other hand, I just heard people talk about how wonderful it would be to have a plan for Stroud's Run Park, and this one's been six years in the making, and I'm a little concerned about that. I couldn't resist, sorry. So what are we going to do? We already have a plan that's been published. We have people that have the disc with the plan on it. We have this one. There's a discrepancy, so I don't think we have to ask them to change it, I suppose. I suppose I'm alone, too, but I don't mind it. I'm the only one that's been there from the beginning of this group, so I have my anger already there. Jim?
I have a procedural question. So the plan that is on the table, that is in motion to be approved, would be what we're calling the original?
No, Plan B. Well, we were, it's supposed to be the same, so we were...
I know, but it's supposed to be, but...
Old man's supposed to be instead.
Okay. Then the procedural question is, if the comprehensive plan is to be amended in any way, do all amendments go back to the planning commission for a recommendation and then come to us for approval? Is that how it works? Can city council amend comprehensive plan?
When I asked Gary, he told me that the planning commission passes it and we pass it. And what Bill was talking, he didn't mention at all. I mean, it's not a subdivision.
It's not in zoning code, yes?
It's not in the zoning code. It's a comprehensive plan. And we're relatively equal in this matter, but I don't know that these are amendments. I think these are oversights in that version.
I think I agree with that.
Yeah, I think so. They would have told us if they were leaving out view sheds, I think.
Well, I think the one that was deliberate was changing "will" to "should," because we can't have "will" for all these other organizations that aren't us. How do we know they will do that? Or do you want to saddle yourself with everything as "will"? I mean, "should," you don't know what the changes are. That was a deliberate change, and I think it was a good change. Because otherwise, "will" in there, everybody's always going to come. It said, "You will do this," even if you have no control over it.
But that's, I mean, this is a guidepost as opposed to the ordinances that would follow from it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's not really so key that we are all, well, the language thing is, at least one change that we see that was substantive, or maybe substantive.
I'd have to see what they're meaning in the view shed, because view sheds and things are in there, but I know the planning commission discussed, you can't control them when they're outside of the city.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know to what degree which one was taken out or modified or whatever. I think there was a realism, realistic standpoint at the planning commission level. There are certain things we have the power to do and there are certain things we don't, either as a city or as organizations. So a lot of words were changed in there because a lot of them were just superfluous because it talks about, if you go back to the original in there, tightening up some of the codes, you know, is used as a phrase or...
Well, it might have just been the professional language of the planners who wrote it as opposed to the planning commission. I mean, there's a difference between that. There's a motive expression that they would use, and maybe it doesn't fit the style that we have in our planning commission. I understand that.
Well, I think, I think I'm hearing two things, and I'd appreciate clarification.
One's because there are two plans.
One is that these changes, or recommendations, or corrections, however you want to say it, are kind of oversights, and it's just a matter of passing a resolution, and the planning commission will go back and look at them. And I have a question, is if we pass a resolution, are we saying, "Would you please look at these?" And they can say, "Well, no, actually, I don't like these. I like the way it originally was."
I think they can do that, yes.
Can they do that? So our resolution doesn't force them to adopt these. It simply says, "Would you look at them again," right? Okay. And then the other thing I hear is that rather than kind of simply, you know, little, that there were deliberate changes made and this reflects the original version, and I think you're on the planning commission, right?
Statutorily, yes.
So there would be, so simply passing a resolution about these would not necessarily get them adopted. Okay. But I just, of course, I'm not a lawyer, but the use of the word "and will," like if you say, you know, "These groups will," I mean, I guess, does that make them, it doesn't mean that they're legally bound if we sue them if they don't, right? I mean, isn't it just kind of...
I guess I've been in the office long enough and been beat over the head a lot of times and said, "You said you would do that," you know?
But we're telling other people...
And we've got hundreds, literally hundreds of things in here, and it's impossible, it's a 20-year plan supposedly, but it's impossible to do everything that's in this document.
Even the new one?
Yeah, even the new one.
Impossible in what way?
Well, would you please bequeath us about $50 million, and then we can talk about if I can get it all done. But I mean, there's a lot of things in there that are just, you know, they're going to take money, and they're going to take time, and they're going to take staff.
Right, like, the, yes, like, right. So is that what you're saying, that the "should" would kind of allow things not to happen? It should happen, but unfortunately, it can't?
Well, "should" or "may," I mean, it makes it possible. "Will," to me, is a word that says, "You will do it." So the planning commission felt uncomfortable with that. And I would think council feel uncomfortable with it, quite honestly.
Okay, the section they're referring to is Section J Collaboration, if I understand the "should" to "would," coordination accountability. And it says, "Mechanisms should be established to provide residents with the opportunity to evaluate community development efforts. Furthermore, reporting mechanisms are needed to measure performance and implementation in this plan in context of defined benchmarks. Organizational entities represented across sections of the community should be created to oversee implementation." I thought we were already doing that. I don't think we have to change it from "should" to "will" because the advisory commission you're putting together is part of that mechanism.
It'll go into effect on the 18th.
So should or will should not be a problem here, right? Am I correct in that?
Yeah, those, yes. But just like there were things that were in the original document by Pogomire that have already happened. You know, and so we-
So where has it gone?
We stuck, we took those out. I mean, we're not ones that happen.
Debbie, I have no, I have no problem with going forward on this. And I have no problem, I hate the word forward these days. I have no problem with continuing with this. But, and I do like a resolution. But if you're going to put a resolution together, I would like a date on that resolution. If things aren't resolved in terms of discrepancies or changes, we should have a nice massive sit-down with the planning commission and work to all hours of the night till we get it right. Put a date on it. Six months, one year, 2020.
Does it work the other way too, when we send you one? Can we put a date on it? Because there's things we spent just five, six years ago you've never done a thing on. I don't like the inference of it, Paul. I mean, this is not a control argument or fight or anything. They're independent bodies.
Yes.
You know, and, you know, if you want the historical thing over, the planning commission did a stor, did a strategic plan in 1992 and followed it and was never adopted by city council.
I'm aware of it.
You know. So I don't know that there's any hard thing in the rules that says who has to adopt and adopt exactly what or anything like that. That's, that's a law director question.
So in theory, we could adopt the original Pogomire setup. Is that what you're saying?
Wait a second.
Who knows? I mean, I think there was only one comprehensive plan. You can't have one by one body and one the other. But it is not surely is what's in, in the charge of the planning commission is to adopt one. It's optional according to evidently, you know, that council adopts it or not.
A comprehensive plan has to be adopted by council. A strategic plan is only adopted by the planning commission. That's why, that's why the ma, the mayor, the law director wrote it the way he did because I was the one that got the ordinance done. So that means that we put our force, our promise to spend money. Not everything in that plan is going to go. I don't see us going all the way out to-
Albany.
Albany with a sewer line. I don't see that happening. And maybe the Stroud's Run thing will happen. But I think there are things in there. This is what the citizens said they wanted at some point in time. And we are saying, "We would like to see this too." I mean, the word, shaving the words, slicing the baloney thinly, would or should, could, I mean, those are things that may be important or may not be. But eventually, some council person's going to have to sponsor an ordinance to do it or else say, "We don't have the money to do it." And that's what it comes down to. That's why we are involved in this one and we weren't asked on the last one. Because this is a comprehensive plan, not a strategic plan.
Carol?
What I hear sort of going on here is that we've had the recommendation that we accept it as is. And what I heard from the people that made that suggestion was that they didn't want it to be held up any further for process because there are too many things in the plan that are important to implement now. So it seems to me that council has to make a decision of, is the current language so bad, so offensive that it could cause a problem if we adopted it the way it is now? Or are we going to sort of approve it with the idea that we can make recommendations for change? And obviously, we could make recommendations for change that would not ever get changed in the language. So we have to decide, is it that important? And I, I understand Nancy's point that it, there are some big differences. And, and when you look at, you know, 300 different changes or things that are different, but a lot of those are very minor. And certainly, the ones that I forwarded, there was nothing that's going to ruin the city or the plan to not have those changed immediately. It's more language situation. So I guess that's what I feel our decision has to be. Is it in our best interest to get something passed so we are protected by a plan? And then work on it. Or are these changes specific and dangerous enough that we don't want it in our plan?
And I would say it's more than just getting something passed. I've heard from most people who've taken the time to sit down and look at the two documents side by side, that they are, there are many areas where they are substantively the same, most, in most cases. And that it's better organized and more readable. And I've heard a lot of appreciation expressed for the usability of the document and the way it has been revised. The maps have not been changed at all. I think we need to make sure when they're reproduced that they're big enough that Pogomire's logo is still visible on them. I think that there's been a huge amount of work invested in getting this comprehensive plan developed. And to this point, and what I'm hearing overwhelmingly from people who've been involved in that process, is that they'd like to see it move forward and for us to have a way to deal with these discrepancies and to deal with other things that may come along that would indicate the need to make changes. Because from the beginning, there's the discussion that there are opportunities and there are reasons that citizens may want to make changes, you know, in a variety of ways. So I think getting the task force organized so that we have a process and a mechanism for working through any of these issues is something that's really important. But I'd like to see us move forward.
I would like to suggest that perhaps, since with our ordinance, we are repealing the Kandevan Ficing map, comprehensive plan of 1967, that we do this in a ser, in a serious way. Not to suggest that this is not serious. But going back and changing it is probably not something that will happen. What will be in the ordinance will be the version that came out of the planning commission. So as a, as a sort of intermediate spot, let's read it again and attach a summary of what the issues were and then just go with it. So it'll be in the record too.
I think that was indicated by the, the group that they had to be-
Yeah, not a resolution, but in the body of the ordinance, saying that there were certain things that were found to be at odds and these are some of them, and talk in general about it. And so that the record is there. Because in, you know, 10 years, who will remember? I mean, who can even think about what Kandevan Ficing did in 1967, for goodness sakes? It's 40 years ago.
Would those be in the form of a wheres type of thing?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because it certainly wouldn't be part of the legal document.
I don't know. Maybe we could ask Gary. But I, you know, I did the original one and I think you could amend it and put it forward. And then it says that there were some discrepancies that we found and they're minor, but, or maybe major, depending on your point of view. The other thing that I, and I think that would, could work. And then we wouldn't have to even go back to the planning commission because we do have the original document and the second document. But one of the things that, the other thing that concerns me is I think we need a cover page that says that Pogomire did the original work.
And that was something else that the group discussed and totally agree.
Yeah, because it was published. And otherwise, we'd be getting close to one of the Athenian problems that we've hired of late.
And yeah, I should've said that we did talk about the fact that, you know, the layout of the document and having the cover page on there, that those things seemed to us things that could be handled administratively and that people were in agreement that those need to be there. And I also trotted out, I didn't bring it this evening, but the, the big fold-out sample brochure that they made, the idea that there are other ways of presenting the information that can continue to be developed. And hopefully, one day we'll have a planner who can help us do that so that people, you know, understand all of this and, and how they can participate in, you know, continuing to weigh in on and shape the goals and objectives of the city.
And so maybe we could do a few wheres that would summarize it in a very general way. And then bring it back off the table and amend it to include those. Which would be our statements that there is a discrepancy between, that we see and we're willing to go along with this, understanding that. A future council could certainly not go along with that or applaud our actions. And that sort of gets us out of the, out of the business of going back to the planning commission saying, "This is-"
Well, and that's what concerns me in the first place. It could take a year.
Another year. We, I mean, hell, we wouldn't be in them. I mean-
And I, what I felt was that it was like 97% there.
There.
There. And that the language was easier. There was less redundancy. Except for the fact that Debbie gave me the same pages like three times. I kept reading the same pages over and saying, "Wow, this seems familiar." But once I figured that out, now it's much more clear than it was. And a lot of just superfluous language was dropped.
And that's language as always. As you know, Miss English teacher, individual.
Right.
Anybody else on council want to weigh in here? Anyone else wishing to speak to us about this? Okay. I don't have any miscellaneous items. Do others? Okay, then Planning and Development is adjourned.
So we'll amend that ordinance and bring it off the table for the next. Okay, so, oh, it's not my turn. It's Jim's turn.
Very quickly, it'll be my turn. Finance and personnel. We have one finance issue. I'm not sure. I can't tell from this memo whether other council members got a copy of it. No, okay, there's, we have a one sentence request from the Athens County Municipal Court asking us to transfer $2,500 from-
I saw that.
Within Fund 232, which is their underage drinkers' fund, which is a grant, grant money that they have received. And they would like us to transfer that $2,500 from their equipment capital line into their salary line, possibly to pay some overtime.
So it's a shift of transaction, transactional points. Is that it?
Yeah, within that fund.
Are you pretty confident that the, well, I guess we don't have any control over the salary, but the overtime is not excessive in that area?
And I'm sorry, I-
Because I've heard-
In, in discussion, in discussion with the auditor, it was possible. It's salary line. That's all we, that's all we know. Because all we have is this sentence here.
We have no control, but it's just the question of how much overtime is needed.
So that, that's the request and it's, yes, Debbie? Okay. So if it's okay, we'll bring that forward.
Oh, you've got the small amount.
Okay. Did you have a-
I have a miscellaneous.
Okay.
Bill asked me to bring this up to folks. We've been talking for some time about the floodplain regulations and the fact that the county is going to be coming up for map modernization under FEMA. And that there's some possibility to explore enrolling the city in the community rating system where people could save money on their floodplain insurance. And to try to expedite the work of, of council's side of this, the legislative work of actually looking at the possible higher standards and what we can do to help prepare the city for this. We are moving ahead with an intern who can coordinate the work of a task force, actually convene that group, look at our floodplain regulations, look at the possible higher standards, and make some recommendations to us about how we can be better prepared for the map modernization and the possibility of enrolling in the community rating system. So just wanted to make sure. We have it within our budget. It's nothing that we have to do legislatively to allow this to happen. But Bill wanted me to make sure that everybody's up to speed.
Okay, so an intern-
A council intern.
Is on board or will be coming on?
City services.
Other than that, that's it?
I was about to grab your poll. I'm sorry. Okay, two, I have two things that I knew about and one thing that I just found out about. The one thing that I just found out about is probably more important than either of these two, but here we are. Okay, so first of all, you have an email from Teresa Carter to me. I was down there talking to Steve or handing in my forms actually for the landlord tenant form. And in that body of that email, Teresa asked, with Steve's permission, that we would install a no-show fee for people who make arrangements to have the officers show up for an appointment and then blow them off, so to speak. And so they're asking for a fee for no-shows. They say it's getting to be a more extreme problem. And if I, it seems to me that $25 is a pretty good charge because it's going to cost them money to drive the vehicle out there and it's a zero-sum game. They're going to be wasting their time. And then we could just say $25 per unit for a no-show. Does anybody have any problems with that?
No.
Okay, this is just a-
Per, per unit?
Per unit, yes.
So it's a 10-unit place with an appointment for one person?
Yes, if their maintenance person doesn't show up. I mean, there's such a thing, I guess, as an occasional emergency. But I think they're absolutely right in, in asking for this. And I'm sure they'll levy it. But if there are no glitches, we'll have it up for first reading next time if you have no problem with it. Okay, my second issue, I gave, Carrie called, what night was it when there was a lot of storm? Thursday night. He called me up and talked to me about this one. I have to say, November 16th is the day I propose to have a meeting on this topic. That would be in a month. If I could put it off more, I probably would. But here we are. So November 16th, this is the landlord tenant form. And I have to say that the mayor and, the mayor Abel and President Glidden appointed a civic behavior task force, was chaired by, co-chaired by Dale Tampey and Gary Hunter. And out of that task force came the landlord tenant form. And so I thought maybe I could give the news media a copy of the revision to the language that Gary said. I tried to tell them that we didn't want to have all the big units involved. You know, I was sort of on the periphery of this and I've been the sort of lightning rod for it. And it isn't really my agenda item. I wasn't on the task force. Neither the university nor the mayor appointed me, so I don't really have any input into it. But I'm sort of picking up the, the pieces at this point in time. I'd like Dale to come back and talk about this. I know Dale talked to several of the landlords that have been pretty vociferous about what's going on and let them have a chance. And we can have a very long meeting somewhere around November 16th and talk about this. Our ordinance, remember, is pretty small. All we do is say we're going to have this tenant form and we're going to limit it. I cannot believe how many words have been added to it, but here it is. And the other thing is, in that same ordinance, I propose that we note, note that the administration is, may make any adjustments it likes to it, since they're the ones that made the initial form out, as I understand it, with Debbie's help, or Debbie was the instigator at our, at Dale's behest and moved it forward. And maybe we can have a discussion, a calm discussion about the 16th of November. I did also suggest to various people, and now I'll suggest the mayor, I think it's pointless to go forward with, with many letters because here we'll be at the next year. So I think they've already made the decision that they're going to try and get as many as they can and then go from there. That doesn't mean the rest of you are off the hook. Okay, so this is fundamentally some discussion points for the future. This is what Steve and Gary came up with. 250 words, you think? Okay, I hope it achieves what we want. As long as they know it, I'm going to put a wheres in there. So the future council knows, "What the heck were we talking about?" All right, so-
Nancy, so you're talking about the forms that they're not filled out?
No, I'm only talking about who gets them.
Who gets them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is their proposal. Because I told them, I thought every, when we talked about units, I thought that it was everything, and it was a year ago, for goodness sakes. But it was every unit less than-
With 10.
With 10 or fewer, yeah. And so there were all kinds of other bits of language added into it. And so I'm going to ask Debbie to send a copy of this to Mr. Cody, Mr., who's that other man?
Sturbois.
Mr. Who?
Mr. Sturbois.
Sturbois, yes. And, and generally to the landlord association, tell them they can, we'll schedule a meeting starting at 10, right? In the morning. Okay.
Amy has a question.
I know. Yeah, Amy. Didn't it take us a long time to do that form? It was just an onerous task.
I know.
It was terrible. Took like five minutes, for goodness sakes.
And I did learn a lot from reading that form as to proper placement and things of trash and recycling and whatnot. My question though, in reading this letter, it's a memo from Gary to you, is that rental units and rooming houses, except for rental properties, having two or more buildings on a single lot, they're exempt from the form?
No. Oh, yeah, more than two buildings on a single lot.
I thought that the reasoning behind the form was to educate and make renters aware of what's going on as far as code. Why are, why are they exempt from?
The, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, but does it also says, "And has somebody on site?"
Right, but that doesn't mean, are we to assume that that manager is-
On-site management. So that means, okay.
Dusters?
I could, I could see where you could have 10 or more, two buildings, like something on Palmer Street. I think there's a couple like that. At the same time, they don't have on-site management. So therefore, I don't think they'd fall through the cracks at that point. They'd have to have a tenant landlord thing. I'm assuming a la, a manager, on-site manager, would educate them where to park their cars and when to throw the garbage out and where to throw the garbage out. Well, or take their deposit real quick. Well, or take their deposit real quick, that's where I'll have.
So, think about that and see, I think we need to get Dale's input on what he was, had originally planned, what came out of that civilian, civilian, civic task force?
Well, yeah, I would like to know then if we are, I would rather not assume that the on-site management is educating them and know that the on-site, on-site management is educating them.
Okay. So that's certainly a question.
Okay.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sorry. Now, I may have missed this because it's late, but I, the current ordinance that I read in the paper, that landlords are not handing in.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, did you say, and I don't know, that we're just kind of forgetting that for this year?
Well, no, I didn't say that, but I think that the, we'll ask the co-director what he's planning to do, but it's, the hour is late and we're going to be.
This hour?
No, no, I meant in terms of getting them back. I, you know, I don't really know, all, I felt like there was a.
Okay, they are late, but I was just thinking that since we passed an ordinance, I, I think we have to, have to some way deal with it.
Right.
Either.
You're absolutely right.
Okay.
I just hate having news media call me up and say, well, what do you think, there are only 4,000 turned in? And what am I supposed to say to that? And so it's, you know, I'm sort of on the edge of it anyway. I'm unhappy that not everybody had the wonderful education that Amy had.
The only thing that I can see in defense of the, the comment of the landlords is that the letters asking for them went out very, very late. I, I was quite surprised personally, because, as you know from the media, I have a rental as well, and I found that it was helpful. These people who are renting my house are, are from Cleveland, they had a lot of questions, and to have that in writing in a form that they keep was very helpful to them. They certainly did not feel that it was a violation of their privacy or any of the other comments, but there was the element of the information going out late, although it had been passed for almost a year.
Right.
And so there certainly should have been knowledge that it was coming.
Yeah, these are the same people that tell us we're supposed to educate the students and they must not have paid attention and known that they were liable to do this form.
Right.
I mean, just go figure.
No, I was gonna say the same thing Nancy just said.
They need education too.
All right, now, did I miss something? I mean, do we know why the forms went out so late?
They went out in August.
The end of August. It was very close to when we were asking for them to come in.
When they were due. They were due at the end of September.
Right, they were due the end of September, but people don't move in until the 1st of September. So we figure if you, if you send it out two months ahead of time, the landlord misplaces or uses it, whatever, both parties aren't there. So we felt that the closer it was to when both parties are gonna be there and moving in and getting keys and everything would be the most logical time to send it.
Well, that makes sense. Does that mean then that the, the deadline should be moved up a little?
Well, we give them 30 days, I mean.
Well, but not, if it went out the 1st and they get it, they finally read their mail, that's a week.
But, think about it, next year they'll know, and only the new landlords won't know. So there'll be no excuse next year.
Hopefully they copy the blank form, they'll already have it.
Right, and the concern was, people that said, well, I have 250 units.
Right.
It's like, whoa.
Multiply that times 500 times 12 and think about how much money that is. Oh my goodness.
And, but you would think that if you had 250 units, you'd be watching for things like that.
Yeah, exactly. Well, we've had our way with the landlords today. So next, we'll hear on the 16th of November, the form itself will be changed, it's already been changed, the idea is to cause education to happen, and it's not a bad idea, not a bad idea at all.
We may even add the comprehensive plan to the next form, so we.
The whole thing.
Oh goodness, I'd like to, I honestly would like to see it online and on two pages.
See what.
See the form to be done online.
We're back to this one.
Yeah, no, I mean, she was just talking about putting the comprehensive plan.
I know, that's why.
I think I was joking.
Well, and the way it is now, they would have to make three copies for each unit, one to keep in the hands of the landlord, one to the tenant, and one to the code office. So if you're using real paper, that's a lot of lumber.
Yeah, it's a lot, we don't need to, and two sides, one sheet maybe.
And at eight cents a copy, I can't go, I mean, you know, they could just go bankrupt with 250 units.
All right. On that note, I have one more thing that's under miscellaneous and then we can move on. Let Paul have his way with, oh no, it's Amy's turn next. We have a project that is under bid, and I have some adjustments to the ordinance, ordinances that have been done over time. 06406, 06306, 010105, I mean, we're going back last year too, 010305. Everything that I did, I think, wasn't right. Okay, 06506, 9606.
Pertaining to what? What is all that?
Oh, to the water, just a minute, wait a second. 10205, all Columbus Road water and sewer.
Okay, so you're saying it's under bid?
So, we have to change the funding formula in a nutshell. Ray wrote me an email on Friday, it said that we're going to put together, he would like us to put together a new ordinance that would be, ask for engineering and inspection, 42,000 for the water pump station, 330 for construction and contingencies of that, 245 comes from ARC funds, yay, and 127 from the water funds in 2007. Okay, so that's one of the first ordinances that Debbie will put out, perhaps in the future we'll have to redo it, but basically we're gonna probably repeal 06306 or at least amend it. And then the second item is the sewer line, that he needs an additional 47,000 for administration and inspection and permit to install for 5,000. So there's some modifications that have also to be done with respect to the sports main and the lift station. I believe the cost is up approximately, it looks like, 200,000? Is that right, Mayor?
Roughly.
Roughly, 200,000?
That has the contingency in it.
Okay, 200,000 here, 200,000 there. But I mean, this is a big project, you start looking at how far it's going, it's astonishing.
It's a million dollar project.
It's a lot of area, but we have, as you can see, FEMA and our own funds in a four, basically a three to one, oh, you can't see because you don't have the paper in front of you. Basically, a million dollar project with three-fourths of it being paid by FEMA and one-fourth of it by sewer funds. And so Debbie's gonna start working on this, and also, so there may be some changes, maybe some other things going on with this, but I wanted to alert you to this little bombshell that Ray left before he went for the day off. Ray, thank you. Okay, so if you wanna look at this, the, he's got a timeline in color, it's very nice. A little bit more money, but still, 750,000.
What's the timeline now?
2007. Okay, we're going up to May, June 15th, construction, the engineering's going on, administration inspection, and then we have the actual process happening at that point in time. We borrowed some, as you recall, we're going to front it and then get FEMA back, but we still may be short in the fund, and that's another thing Debbie's going to be looking at for me. But, think about it, we are doing, we have a bargain here. We can thank Andy Stone for agitating for that FEMA money, so, and I think he's back, isn't he?
He's in Rome.
He's in Rome, yeah, I got it.
Good.
Thank you, Andy. We want you back right now. Anyway, that's, those are the things that are going to be coming up, and I'm gonna hand it to Debbie and say, thank you Debbie for doing that for me. Okay, I'm through.
Now, Nancy, one, I have a question about City Services. I've been approached by two, these two people in the past week about getting streetlights in various areas. Is there a progress in doing something like that, or is there a list?
Are they new lights?
They want a new light on Central, and somebody approached me about Jeff Hill, which of course is something different, but I mean, should I just tell him to talk to you or talk to Ray or something, or do you have, have we put new streetlights in lately?
I don't, no, because I don't do that.
Okay.
Street Department does, I mean, it just adds to, that would get it on the list with AEP and, but usually they'd look at it and see if it's justified.
Okay.
Yeah, you send it to Ray or to, or the Street Department, it'd want to be fine.
Okay, I just want to know the mechanism.
Sure.
And as long as we're saying that, those people out there who also want a streetlight, make sure you do the very same thing, send a note in to Paul Wile, who.
Who just volunteered for our.
Well, I just remember, streetlights being contentious.
Well, in most cases, we do like to check with other people, because maybe one person on the block and it says, oh, I need a streetlight there.
Yes.
But they're not the one right next to it.
Yeah.
And the one right next to it said, I don't want a streetlight there.
They don't want to be able to read their novels.
That's what I explained.
It has to be a little, little neighborhood consensus here.
Good.
I was being facetious. I'm done.
All right. Transportation. The first item on our agenda is bicycle safety. It was on for committee last time, but I wanted to do a little more research and talk to a few more people before we talk a little more about it. I have since, with the help of Debbie, done some looking into as far as the traffic code here in the city, and then some of the Ohio Revised Code, as well as some code in Columbus. Basically, I think, the reason that I bring this to council is because I'm greatly concerned about the bicycle safety in the city. I know of two times in the past month that I have come very close to hitting bicyclists. One was riding into, riding into oncoming traffic at night with no lighting at all, came very close to hitting her, scared me, scared me. Another one was riding out in the middle of the street, swerving back and forth. So, and I know, you know, I'm just one driver, so I'm sure this has happened to many people, and as a driver, I'm very concerned about the safety of bicyclists, because I certainly don't want to hit a bicyclist, I want them to abide by the rules. But I don't know, I mean, we have a lot of code on the rules for bicycling through the city, most of which is not followed by many of the bicyclists that I have observed. So, I don't know where we start or what we do in terms of creating, or making it safer for people to bicycle in the city. I know that, I haven't talked to the police department, I'm not sure how many, or if any citations they write to bicyclists, or how we could even enforce that. So, wondering from council if you've heard from, I, I mean, I also was approached or phoned by another constituent who was hit by a bicyclist, getting into his car during the day, knocked over by a bicyclist. That can't be happening. So I don't know if anyone else has any other stories or knows, I mean, everyone has been on council or been in the city longer than I have, as far as what we can do to increase bicycle safety, or at least educate bicyclists on what they can and cannot do. I know that, just in my head, I was exploring possibly, you know, enforcing some sort of registration of bicyclists. That way upon, you know, them registering, they would have to, much like the tenant-occupant landlord agreement, they would then, you know, educate themselves on what the rules are, maybe sign something, you know, turn it in, what have you. Sure, the question is, as Paul brought up to me earlier, who does this, who handles this? What can we do to enforce safer bicyclists? So.
One more thing, add to your list, I think we need to get, working with the university as well, because some of them move from campus, off-campus, on the wrong side of the street, weaving in and out and driving in a careless fashion. Couple of my advisees do it actually, started to job on them. But I think that maybe we could ask the police department to do an intensive enforcement if they would be willing. I mean, that's what I see as an option, just start stopping and saying, you're creating a public nuisance, both for cars who are driving and pedestrians. But the people really do swing through campus on the sidewalks, I don't think they should do it, but they do.
Right.
And they're virtuous because they're riding bikes, right?
Yeah. Well, is that a civic responsibility thing?
Well.
The Dale Tamkey?
I don't know. He's not the only one for civic responsibility.
No, I know, but I was just thinking that he's working on some of those issues.
I see David has his hand up.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. He writes his name.
David Ingram on 20 Marist Avenue, I'm, I'm a bicyclist, I bicycle a lot, I have lights on my bicycle.
Thank you.
I ride my bicycle on the right-hand side of the road, which is exactly where the Ohio Revised Code requires people to do it. We need an education campaign for those two things. Where do you ride the bicycle? And you need lights at night, you should have lights at night. And that's, those two things, I think, we really have to have a big education campaign on, because those are the two things, you can tell from my accent, I don't come from here originally. Those are the two things that most youngsters in Britain are picked up for by the police. Riding lights, riding at night without lights, riding, riding on sidewalks. The police need to enforce it, obviously, but we need to have an education campaign.
That would be a good project for my winter class, actually.
Or your winter class?
Yes.
Getting ready for spring.
David, a question, what do they get fined with, the kids who get picked up for something?
A few pounds, a few, a few dollars, I mean.
10 bucks?
Usually taken home to their parents is the, is the usual.
We can't do that, I guess.
Thank you.
Education, I mean, actually, my winter class needs to develop a communication campaign, so that could be an interesting project.
Wouldn't be bad.
They don't implement it, they plan it.
A PSA for the government channels as well.
Right, unless, but do you want a whole, full-blown?
Yeah.
Okay, but that would have to be, they wouldn't finish until spring.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, as I discussed with Paul earlier, that maybe first it starts with enforcement, but also, I mean, after I read through the code, there were many things that, again, I was unaware of, I don't bicycle a lot, I might familiarize myself with it more had I, or should I bicycle throughout the city? My bicycle, I rode to Nelsonville and the pedal fell off, so it's gone. However, I think that education certainly is a big part of it, as I think that it's been an ongoing theme, at least this year of city councils, that we need to educate people more on what the code and what the rules are within the city, so people can then be safer, law-abiding citizens.
I was just gonna say that council has been approached several times by representatives of bicycling group, spokes council, and I would think it would be time to maybe approach them and ask them to help us in this educational effort also. But I reiterate what Paul suggested, that you need to talk to the police about their interpretation of the code and how they're enforcing it right now.
Or what the easiest way for them to enforce it is. I mean, how much can they do? How much can they coordinate with the university in terms of that, if we're having a university, you know, people pedaling off the campus, on campus, and not paying attention to where they are?
The roads aren't into.
I mean, you can see in the code that, I know Debbie, I think, gave you a copy of our code, and it says certain sections you can't go on sidewalks and.
Yeah, I mean.
It's nine tenths ignored.
Most of the, yeah, most of the streets within the uptown area, you're not supposed to be riding on sidewalk, and more often than not, people are riding on the sidewalks, which is dangerous. Debbie?
Just to, you know, remind all of us that, you know, when we've heard from people, it's also about safety and the fact that there are a lot of folks in town who ride bicycles for transportation and not just for recreation. And so while the bike path is really wonderful and people appreciate it a lot, as far as getting around to classes or to businesses, it is really difficult for people to ride safely down Court Street. And so, they aren't supposed to be on the sidewalks, but it also is a really harrowing experience for a lot of people riding bikes on the city streets. So, I think it's really good that we keep thinking about transportation more broadly and how the different forms of transportation fit together. I like the fact that the group that's been working on buses is looking at buses that have bike racks on them and how different parts of the transportation system can fit together, because it's not, not a one-way street. Some of the unsafe behavior on the part of bicyclists is probably in an attempt to be Some of the unsafe behavior on the part of bicyclists is probably in an attempt to be a little bit safer themselves in a scary situation.
Sure.
I'm on listserv for the Athens Transportation, the spokes council people, and I know they've been talking with Ray about bike lanes on the South Court area. I also know that the, I think it's, maybe Cyclopath has a website where they have a list of good streets that they consider safe or not safe. And maybe when Andy Stone gets back in terms of looking at a, I hate to put a task on him because he's not here, but one of the things that we might want to start thinking about is how to make, what streets are better for bicyclists versus not. And the reason why I say that is because I'm aware First Street gets transportation in both directions with bicycles. And that's not a street that gets a lot of travel, but between Walker and Schaefer, you've got, you know, it's a one-way, but people go both ways, mostly because they don't want to go down a hill on Brown, which shows laziness on, at least lack of good gearing, I guess, I don't know what it is. But that's something to think about is how can we actually, you know, we're thinking transportation, changing transportation and directions of streets even. And that's a lot of work to start planning that, because it throws everything in a muddle. But at the same time, if we want to look at the whole package, just besides cars, we have to think about that. And I just mentioned in passing, because that's why people do that, they go down President the wrong way, they go, you know, in directions down Union the wrong way and Congress and, you know, we, I, you see--
Terrace Drive.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I was going up Congress and--
Stewart.
That's why, Stewart, yeah, I mean, all, any of those.
All of them.
Yeah, I mean, all of them.
Are we finished with bicyclists for the moment?
We'll never be finished with it.
Okay, for the moment?
Um, yeah, but not with the committee. I'm done with bicycles, sure. Nobody has anything else to say?
Oh, I had a miscellaneous.
Okay, I also have a miscellaneous real quick.
All right, well, go ahead.
I was wondering, Mayor, this is probably a question for you, and some of the areas on the streets, for instance, North Lancaster and West State, there are yellow curb painting or so it's supposed to be yellow. I can barely see those during the day and I can, definitely can't see them at night. I'm wondering if there is a plan or if we could somehow get the street department to go through and repave, or repaint some of those yellow curbs?
I know they got a list from the street, from the police department last week, the ones that they wanted painted and such, but I don't have that list with me.
Okay, would Ron have that?
She should have, because it's, in essence, the work order.
Okay, I'll just, I'll get it from Ron and see. Thanks. Sorry, Jake.
That's okay. I was just curious, this has been the mayor too. What's the update on North Court rumbling, rumble, rumble bricks?
Stole my miscellaneous.
They're going to go ahead and start doing it, it's just getting it scheduled is the only issue, it would be down to one lane when they're working on it.
They're going to rip them up and put them all back down again?
Not all of them, they're going to take those that are, it's a miss, it's a height problem. So they're going to take out those that are higher and then try to replace them with others. They had hoped to get to it sometime last week, but just got too busy with other things.
What's the cost of this? I'm curious.
Our labor force?
I know. It must cost, that's a lot of time to lay brick by brick.
Right.
I was just curious what something like that would cost.
I can ask for an estimate.
You can tell me next time, yeah, okay. Thanks.
Any other miscellaneous? Adjourned.
Okay, now, it says Communications Committee, Uptown Cleanliness, but frankly, it's a long night and I want to talk with the bar owners and some other people before we tackle that. So I'm going to pass on Uptown Cleanliness at the moment. And just as a miscellaneous, I just want to remind people that the summaries of the meetings are now posted on the city council website. So if you missed the meeting or want to review it or have friends that didn't watch it on TV, you can get a quick summary, you know, in two or three minutes and find out what happened on city council if you go to the website and, and you'll see it says minutes of the meetings, so.
I have one question, actually. I just thought of this. I often want to review the council meeting, like, you know, see it on TV and I, I don't get the chance, don't get the chance to catch it on the government channel. I'm wondering how much work, and if it is a lot of work, I don't think it's really that important. If we're able to get a link up on the website that just has the previous meeting on video stream.
Well, I have to tell you, I believe it's, it's podcast or something, isn't it? But that's, is that a real-time thing?
I'd have to ask.
Okay, I thought Scott, no, it's not podcast.
He's shaking his head no.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought it was told it was. My, I believe that given the, what we're trying to do is, is basically revise the city council website so we can provide more up-to-date information. The ordinance is stopped in 2002, et cetera. So we're working on a lot of those things and I, and my understanding is making changes is extremely difficult. So I think at this moment--
Sure.
--to say that it's possible to do streaming video, I, I--
I just wanted to put it in.
Can't, thank you.
Underpaid.
And I, that's something for the future and I'll certainly find out, but I can tell you that it's extremely difficult to make even the changes that we want to make. So we're working on it.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Oh, any other communications committee issues?
Are you going to have a Halloween committee someday soon?
Okay, Communication Committee is adjourned.
What? You're going to have a Halloween committee someday soon or not?
I'm not, I'm not Halloween committee. That's Carol.
Thought the communications was involved.
Well, we attend it, but it's recreation.
Okay, I guess it's Environmental Committee. I really don't have much except for this, which I'm passing forward to you or sideways to you. This is essentially a digest of the New York sanitation codes. This was perked up to me from, I forget if it was either Steve Pearson or Ray Hasslett, part of the Clean Committee. Really what you're looking at, the sidewalks and gutters section where a owner would be responsible for 18 inches off the curb. And I bring this up with no concept of it's going to happen, because until we get a litter control officer, it's fantasy. But I want you to think about it. I've been looking around for other cities that do this besides New York. I have yet to find one. This may be one of Giuliani's leftover broken windows situations. But I pointed out, it's, two things of interest. One is that it makes people responsible 18 inches off the curb, so therefore just pushing the stuff off the sidewalk and onto the gutter is not going to make, is going to make a, would make a difference if we have to enforce it. It would give another tool for a litter control officer when we get one. The last interesting thing on there is enforcement routing, which actually says that they only enforce it at certain hours, which I found very interesting. I guess when they're going to and from or something like that. But at the same time, I just want, I don't want to act on it because we don't have a litter control officer. I do want you to think about it as a tool possibly to put in use after that person's in place. And that's all I really have, unless there's other miscellaneous. It kind of dovetails with what you're telling, but Jake could talk about Uptown Clean--
Yes, I do want to say, I saw a woman--
What?
I'm sorry, sweeping the sidewalk in front of several stores and it was such a wonderful thing.
Did you thank her?
I thanked her.
Was it you?
And I said, "This is a wonderful thing, thank you." But, but I think, you know, more, more business owners ought to be like that and managers. But I do want to talk with them so we can work together on this.
Okay. And the other miscellaneous is to arrange a field trip to go look at various areas, one being Central Avenue. We had something pending, if you remember, use of right-of-way for rental on Central, my neighborhood woods.
Those for parking, right?
For parking, yes. So that's in the right-of-way, city right-of-way. It needs to be looked at because the road jogs there and it's really kind of hard to find out where things are and how it's set up. So I was thinking, actually, as Nancy was thinking and I was thinking, that we'd be talking about two weeks from now, which would be before our next committee meeting.
Or else we could have our council meeting there. On the bus.
How the batteries on that laptop?
The media's welcome.
Okay, so what are we talking about? Five o'clock?
Five o'clock, because it's daylight savings time. After that, it's going to be dark.
Okay.
Could we have a meeting at five and then just go right into council after that? Debbie doesn't have to come?
Five o'clock.
Yeah.
Wait, two weeks from now?
Yeah.
What's the date on that? That would be--
The 21st?
Twenty, the, two weeks from now?
What day is the ninth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Yeah.
How do you feel about that? 10/23, five o'clock?
What are we looking at?
Where do we meet here?
Yes.
Several things that we have to look at, isn't it?
Central Avenue, there's a right-of-way for a rental--
We've got to do something, it's a request for a revocable license.
Local use of the right-of-way.
Well, if we're going to decide maybe we can leave at 6:30.
Okay.
Debbie's trying to arrange a bus with Ron. We have a fifth Friday, so everybody can have Halloween off, right? Fifth Monday, I mean, fifth Monday, 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 31st.
Yeah, yeah.
So they're--
This is a, this is persuasion, folks.
31st is on Tuesday, so it's Monday we have off the 30th.
It's not Halloween at all.
That's Recovery Day.
No, for me, it's just another Monday, but I just thought we wouldn't have to, we could all make a concerted effort not to meet that Monday and have a day off.
Paul, I just wanted to mention the citizen complaints concerning the graffiti, especially on the west side. They've been very impassioned about the problem and the increase. I was encouraged to see the article in the newspaper that it's being addressed by the police. I'll be interested to keep an eye on how things are going and, and I don't know if there's any kind of ordinance that council should look at for future for, in terms of addressing graffiti and how it might be able to be approached. But we haven't really had that problem in Athens before to this extent and now especially on the west side, it suddenly is a problem.
Yes, I think in the past week I've received about 14 megabytes of pictures on my--
Right.
--poor little dial-up modem.
That will be on the field trip, it's on the way.
But part of the thing there is that, I know I've talked to Captain Pyle about it. Of course, he's, he's mentioned, brought up the idea of crime watch areas or community watches.
Right.
It's a difficult thing to do when you have, you know, a high percentage of rentals in the neighborhood. You don't have all the same feelings about this. There's people who think it's, you know, consideration is it's art in some cases or the political statements. I agree with the political statements and therefore it's, it's okay to have it. I've been approached, because my name was in those articles, that, that some people think it's a good idea to keep it because it provides a nice funky atmosphere to the west side. I'm quoting at that point. On the same token is, you know, it's on private people's, private property. I know some people are concerned about the actual removal of those by the city that would damage the facing of walls. So I'm getting, you know, I've been receiving lots of feedback on this, both, both for and against, including that, say, 14 megabytes of pictures. I think one of the theories I'm hearing is also that there was a class set up for something, for stenciling somewhere in, either in the middle school or the elementary or someplace that has generated a lot of these little things. So I'm not sure about that either. So somebody check their curriculum and make sure they--
Sounds like urban folklore.
They're stencils. They're telling me that somebody's making stencils, shows people how to make stencils. So I don't know if that's--
Well, certainly stencil making is a basic in art classes, but that doesn't mean encouraging them to go out and use them for tagging. And I, I mean, obviously, if there's tagging on private property, that's not a good thing.
No.
Especially if it's your property that is tagged. And if it's on public property, that's why we have an approval process for art in public places on the public right-of-way, that it is not just something that you go and do.
I understand. I am in agreement with that. Okay. And I say, we're trying, I'll, I'll create a task for myself to look at graffiti laws, but again, it's always a question of how to, you know, apprehension and how to--
Right.
--prosecute, things like that.
And how, no, everybody mad at you as opposed to just half of the people, right?
Yeah. Okay, so--
If you don't want to do the field trip, we don't have to. I just want to say--
Oh, I'm excited.
We love field trips.
So anything else from miscellaneous environment?
Oh.
Okay.
Nothing else? We adjourned then. That's it.
All right, I'm trying my, my darn.